Hello, everyone. We'll start the meeting. This is the Board of Selectmen, the town of Situette, the very first Zoom meeting. We're hoping that it goes well, so be patient while we go through it. I would like to, before I do the intros, just like to call the meeting to order. It is now 6:37 on September 8th. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. Because we are not all together, we have to do a roll call for all votes. So I will do that quickly.
That's okay, I can do that.
To accept the agenda. And I will go in a particular order. Mara Curran.
Aye.
Karen Connolly.
Aye.
Andrew Goodrich.
Aye.
Tony Vignani.
Yes.
Karen Canfield, yes, it's unanimous, we accept the agenda. The way we're going to go through tonight, folks, is in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency, we are all, we're meeting remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded live. It's also being livestreamed on Situette Community Television Facebook Live. And the recording will be put on Comcast on Channel 9 and YouTube after the conclusion of this meeting. The order of business will be just as if we were all sitting in the conference room. We will go through the posted agenda. The items discussed will be deliberated by the Board. When that is completed, then we will open it up to questions and answers from the public. In order to be recognized, I'll ask that you go to under, I believe it's under reactions. If you are on a computer, you can, oh, that's clapping. Now, under, there's a way to raise your hand. I'm gonna have to ask Seth to rescue me here.
It'll be right there. Yep, there's a clap and there's a raised hand.
There's a re, oh, okay. Okay, so under reactions, you'll just do, raise your hand, please, and then we'll acknowledge people in that manner. If for some reason it's not working, feel free to just wave and try to get attention. We'll try to do the best we can with this. It is our first Zoom meeting. I will also ask you when you are called upon, if you would please give your name and your street address, these, they will be part of the minutes. We need to identify everybody that participates in a public meeting. And I just want to say a special thanks to Seth Pfeifer, who's our community TV guru, and Michelle, and Lorraine, and Allison in our offices, who have gone above and beyond to try to figure out this format. Right now, we're up to 42 participants, and that's a whole lot more than we could've gotten any place in town, so thank you for that. That, I believe, is all I have as far as introductions. If you are watching this, you've obviously found the Zoom codes and how to get in, so I won't repeat those. And if you're on Facebook Live and watching, we will not be able to recognize anybody on Facebook Live, because that's not the format we're conducting the meeting. That's simply if you want to watch. If you want to participate, go to the agenda and follow the Zoom meeting link. I believe that's everything. So I will begin the meeting with asking if there are any walk-ins. Okay, I see one real hand, okay. Ms. Sanders, I will unmute you. Please state your name and address. Oh, hold on. Did you get a little thing that says you could unmute?
Yeah.
Okay, there you are.
Okay.
Hi, here you are.
Okay. Hi, I am the leader of--
I'm sorry, could you give your address too, before we start?
Yeah, we live at 226 Beaver Dam Road in Situette. And my name is Nikki Sanders-Smead. And I'd like to speak to a letter that was submitted to the Board today as to the creation of a Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. And just to introduce myself, I'm the wife of an Irish fishing woman and the mother of two black children aged 11 and 3. We all live in a house that we owned. We are not renters, we've been asked repeatedly. And I really don't even want to be here tonight, but I've marched in the streets of Boston, on the Mall in Washington, and for many, many causes, and came to Situette to rest, and I can't. I can't rest, because my 11-year-old son is 5'6", and my tallest cousin on my father's side is 6'7", so my son will be approximately the size of George Floyd before he finishes Situette High. I can't rest, because I've had, I've been asked if I was a nanny for one of the families in town and assumed to be on welfare, repeatedly, and I'm not. I've also been asked why I live here if I hate white people, and I don't. I married a white person. I've also been called a he/she after clearly identifying myself as a female. I wholeheartedly believe in the mantra, "When they go low, we go high." So I prayed, and I moved my feet, and the Situette Pride Group held a straight-talk panel discussion on being queer in Situette, and that is now being used by the counseling staff in the school system to educate people on those issues. But there are some groups that have been involved in the charge that has been approved to create a committee, that have been able to organize to become, approved to be on that committee, but haven't been able to organize to stand behind the people who have signed the letter today. Good people are leaving this town and preparing to leave this town because of the atmosphere of toxic white privilege, which we need to discuss. We think we have part of the solution. We believe the solution is to reexamine the current approved charge for the creation of this committee in a manner outlined in the letter we have submitted. The committee, and agreeing to make a public statement also located in the letter, will move our town away from being a powder keg waiting to explode. And I would say to the good people planning to exit, if you're looking for a sign from your God or the universe of whether to stay or whether to go, here it is, stay. It won't be easy, and there's a lot of work to do, but if you're involved right now in the work to create a more supportive and safe atmosphere for those who are underrepresented, stay. Join us and bring a friend to every meeting and to every rally. Your God or the universe has chosen you to do the work, whether you like it or not, so please, stay. With the current approved charge, how many, I have some questions. With the current approved charge, how many people of color or people from underrepresented groups in town will end up on that committee?
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
And I have another, I have one more question. What contributions have those chosen to be, those groups chosen to be on the committee and approved by the Board to be on that committee that was, whose charge was approved, made towards the advancement of equality and justice in our town recently? If the goal of the committee, and this is the final one, if the goal of the committee is to advise the Board of Selectmen on issues of equality so that they can approve any suggestion made by the advisory committee, why do they then also need to be on the advisory committee and determine what's important for them to consider and vote on? So, I know it's a lot, but I don't know how much time I have, so I wanted to get everything--
You're actually over time, but I'm pretty sure I speak for the whole Board. I really commend you for your courage for coming on and giving us your point of view, because it's very important to hear it. So thank you for doing that. Just for others, we try to limit walk-ins to just five minutes, so we can get to everything on the agenda. I did get the letter sent by Mr. Sullivan, who's in the box next to you, and it was signed by everybody. It was sent by Mr. Sullivan, and I did want to just relay what I told him in response to receiving this letter about an hour ago, is that because of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, we are unfortunately not able as a Board to debate or discuss an item that's not on the agenda, actually, for one of the reasons you brought up. It's really not fair, because you haven't told everybody you're gonna have that conversation. So we will take this letter, I will include it in our formal correspondence for the next meeting, and we'll have a discussion about, you know, whether, you know, when it should be on the agenda again. I will note that we discussed this matter twice, originally July 7th, and then we voted on August 18th on the formation. So it was an open meeting, obviously it wasn't as easy as a Zoom call, but it has been reviewed and discussed by the Board. So when we have a chance to opportunity, I'm happy to talk to you anytime offline, but unfortunately, the Board cannot deliberate or talk about a lot of the issues that you asked already. I can inform you on the process, but I think that needs to be done outside this meeting, and I hope you understand that it isn't because the issue isn't important to us, it's, we have to adhere to those laws.
I understand. It's good to know that there were two meetings before held where there was a discussion on this particular committee.
Yeah, absolutely. We, as I told Mr. Sullivan, the, unfortunately, even the letter that was sent to us, the Board cannot independently get together and talk about it, because we have to do everything in an open meeting, and we adhere to that. So, I would like to see if there's anyone else that has a walk-in. Mr. Sullivan, let's see.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, please give your name and address.
My name is Desmond Sullivan. I live at 261 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. I'm 21 and a college student at Massasoia Community College. I'm also a community organizer and a member of Situette Black Lives Matter. I'm here because I don't want a black person to be killed by police in this town. I'm here because I don't want someone with a different gender identity or sexual orientation to feel unsafe in our community. I'm here because I don't want someone with a disability to be denied access to equal treatment in this town. I was at Situette High School for only one year, my sophomore year, and I saw racism and bigotry from my peers that I never thought possible in this community. I saw firsthand how alienation and ignorance can make someone feel so low, make someone feel so excluded, make someone feel so unsafe. I don't want a young Muslim girl feeling like she is less than human. This committee needs to be taken with the utmost sincerity. Deliberate action must be taken to make sure that all, no matter what they look like or what they believe in, are made to feel safe and included in this community. I think that a more careful review of this committee and more consultation with the community at large is central to making that vision a reality. An official statement by the Board and the town administrator is a great step, one which would make underrepresented and oppressed communities feel more secure during this time. The next two months will be even more polarizing and will be more unsafe for oppressed communities in this town and across the country. But the Board can support them through this difficult and consequential time in our nation's history by making the statement and providing more community outreach for the formation of this committee. I have a few questions for the Board. How did the Board come to the decision to include four government officials on the committee? And would you be willing to decrease that number so that more at-large, underrepresented residents would be involved?
Quickly, the, Mara, do you want to, Ms. Curran was, is, took the lead in crafting this? I'm happy to answer it, but I don't want to, I'll defer to you, Mara, if you'd like to--
Sure, sure. And thank you both for your statements. I did read the letter that you sent today at 5 o'clock, and I just want to note that that letter did not include the final version of the advisory committee. I had a couple of conversations with different folks that signed that letter, and we did make amendments to the composition of the committee, but to, so that we could have that greater balance of community representation--
Do you mind informing me to that change?
Excuse me?
Do you mind informing me to the, to the new composition of the committee, just so it's on the record and that everybody knows?
Sure. And it also will be posted when the announcement goes out for participants to submit their applications. So what we did is we changed it to, to have the language say that up to 11 members can be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, which may include the following, but is not limited to, one, and that was the key thing that the Board felt very strongly of, is that we had that flexibility that, to include more members at large on the committee for them to come forward. And we were not, we didn't want to just, we didn't want to leave anybody out, I think is the best way to say it. But we did outline a few that have been leaders in this effort in town. So it says that, which may include the following, but is not limited to, one member of whom shall be representative of the Situette Black Lives Matter Organization, one member of whom shall represent the Situette Interfaith Clergy. And I will note that those two organizations were two of the first most outspoken to the Board, so that is why those two were particularly called out, and the Board felt that it was appropriate. One member of whom shall be the Situette Human Resources Director. We feel it's important to have our Director of Human Resources, because he oversees all the policies and the training in town, and he needs to participate and listen to our community as to what types of trainings we need and how we need to amend anything moving forward. One member of whom shall represent Situette Town Staff. We also think it's important that our employees participate in this. One member of whom shall represent the Board of Selectmen. We obviously want to have representation of the Board on the committee. One member of whom shall represent Situette Public Safety, or Police or Fire or both. And then five members of citizens from the Situette community at large. Applicants for at-large positions will be selected using the process for all Boards and Committees membership. And the Board of Selectmen reserves the right to appoint additional members of the at-large community to fulfill open positions to ensure that the committee equals 11 members. So those 11 members will, you know, once the folks apply and come together, will have, you know, direct responsibility in outlining how much broader, you can always create a task force within a committee. I would suspect surveys will be done, and we really want to have it to be a proactive committee. And there certainly is no outreach or limitation to including and making sure, including persons of color and gender and different identities. We want to make sure that as many people who want to be represented, obviously, can take part in the process.
Okay. And what proactive steps will the Board be taking to make sure that everybody in this town knows that this is what's happening and you are welcome to apply, besides simply stating it in a, in a public meeting?
Yeah, so we posted on our Facebook, we also posted on the website and blasted out to the entire town. This will be, obviously, recorded and out there as well. We certainly can get in touch with the Situette Mariner to let them know about it, so folks apply. And we're just in the process of doing that, Desmond. So this, I believe, Michelle and Lorraine, we're planning on sending out those notices this week.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to cut you off there, because we're way past time, and we really want to have time to get to everything on our agenda. I would encourage everyone, when that is posted, when the announcement for applications is posted, share it, share it, share it, share it. That's the best way to reach as many people as possible. Mr. Darty, I see, has his hand up. Mr. Darty, you are well aware of the five-minute rule, so I will ask you to state your name and address. Nice to see you on your beach.
David Darty, 122 Gilson Road. I won't take very long. I just want to let you know that the turbine continues to wake and disturb myself and my neighbors, and it's been particularly perplexing to me since I'm recovering from a very significant illness. Now, I understand, if I understand correctly, you intend to bring Epsilon in to discuss their report as far as their findings on the 22nd of September. But yet, I've also, if I understand correctly, you don't want to allow us, the general public, to be able to address them directly and ask them questions, and everything has to go through you. Is that correct?
That is how all Board meetings are conducted, yes.
And I don't understand why, since they were hired by public funds, and we're all, we're all taxpayers, we contributed to that, in fact, they may be working for all of us collectively. And I really stress that I would like the opportunity, direct questions directly at whomever Epsilon sends forward, certainly not Al Bangert, because Al Bangert is not hired by them, he shouldn't be, he shouldn't be--
Mr. Darty--
--studying his reports.
Thank you for that comment. We'll take it into consideration. And as, as I've said, the, in the past, Epsilon was hired by the town, and the five Board of Member, Board of Selectmen members were elected by the town to represent everyone. So we take that very seriously, and we will put that on the agenda for 9/22. And as I've, and we can, we can discuss the limitation of the time that you can have questions, but they will need to go through the Board, because that is, that is the structure of the Board. We are now at 6:54, and I hate that we're late, because we have a lot on the agenda. So I'd like to move on to, Jim, do you want to go to the town administrator's report, or shall we get on track? And I think we should go with you first, if you don't mind.
I'm gonna be very, very brief, so if you want to do that, we can do that. As I reported this morning, we had three cases since my update last week, no new cases today. The state infection rate today was 1.7%. Of the three Situette cases, two of them are actually out of state, they were diagnosed out of state, and they're quarantining, quarantining out of state, but because they are Situette residents, they will count on our COVID count. So, but really, just one case in the past week for people in town. We will be keeping a close eye on what's going on now with Labor Day weekend pass. We do expect there could be some spikes from Labor Day weekend. But right now, Situette is actually doing a very good job, and our numbers are reflecting that. So the big things again now will be Labor Day weekend, and then next week with the kids going back to school, what's gonna happen there and how that's gonna affect our numbers and what we do there. But the schools have done a fantastic job to get ready to open. I think they're gonna be able to do it in a very safe and responsible manner, so I look forward to that. We talked about the water ban, the water department will be in tonight to talk. The reservoir right now is 37.5% full. We get 3/10 of an inch of rain last week. The average water usage last week was about 700,000 gallons a day. That's up from the 580,000 from the week before. Part of that is we got more rain the week before, and part of that is also Labor Day weekend. We hope we are now on the down slope of our water usage as Labor Day weekend has gone by, but we do need people to conserve. Again, that's drinking water that you're putting on your lawns. We need that for people, we need that for fire protection. You really don't need it for your lawn, your lawn will come back when we get rain in the fall, so please, conserve water for the best you can. We are putting water from well 17A into the reservoir. That is very cold water, that has dropped the temperature in the reservoir, which has helped our manganese levels. We've also started a new treatment for manganese at the treatment plant that is going on now that is having a very good effect on the manganese levels going out of the plant, and we'll continue to monitor that as the situation changes. But right now, we are showing good results from the manganese leaving the plant. Again, we need people to conserve water, we're getting low. As soon as we get water back in the reservoir this fall, we will start flushing again for the discolored water that people are seeing in the system. Two construction projects, really to update you on, that are going on. The Cedar Point project is a very large soil project that will be starting out of Cedar Point. The contract will be out there this week, doing prep work, doing some erosion controls, some surveying, things like that. We expect to see the actual construction start next week. This will be very disruptive to people who live out in the point, it will be disruptive to people who want to go out in the house. The roads will be closed, it'll be two-way roads going in and out, depending on when the construction is. We will be posting an update every Friday, showing the next two weeks' look ahead, so people will get an understanding of what's gonna happen. But we ask you to pay attention to what's going on, and pay attention to the signs, pay attention to the detail offices. That's gonna be a very large disruptive project scheduled to be completed in May of 2021, and that will reduce the inflow and infiltration going into our water treatment plant by approximately 40,000 gallons a day, basically of seawater that we're treating in our plant. So this is a huge project for the health of the plant and for the capacity of the plant. The other project that we've talked a lot about recently is the Egypt Beach Birm Project. As we all know, we had a Zoom call on that last week. We are using smaller rocks on the project than what is seen on the Man Hill End. Also, the amount of work on the Egypt Beach side is much less. I think at Man Hill, the size of the birm was increased by almost six feet. On Egypt Beach, it'll be 18 to 24 inches. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna bury those stones deeper into the birm, and take some of the existing cobble and put it back on top, so it'll look like what we see there right now. That project was scheduled to get underway this week. However, those employees that work for the construction company, some of them come from out of state, so there are some COVID-related issues around quarantining and things, so we actually don't expect to see any work out there until sometime next week. Maybe as early as Monday, maybe not till later on in the week, as soon as we know, we can let people know. Last item, we have done the athletic field, nearing final completion. All three fields have been turned over to the town, including the softball field. They have been marked for both fall sports and with their permanent markings. So they are open, they are being permitted by the Recreation Department. What's left in now is mostly punchless things. We do anticipate having it done by the end of this month. We would like to set up some sort of opening ribbon cutting around a fall sport with social distancing and things like that. But that facility is a fantastic facility, and now it's gonna be incumbent upon the people of Situette, particularly the young people who play on that, to keep it the way it is, to maintain it, to not abuse it. And as Andrew Goodrich pointed out today several times, no golf on the field. You cannot play golf on those fields. If you would like to hit off a turf, piece of turf, you can go up to the driving range of the golf course. We actually took some turf remnants up there and put them in the driving range. But please, this is a one-of-a-kind facility, it really is a joy and a pride for the town, so the people who use it are gonna need to keep it up, they need to pick up after themselves and really take care and follow the rules up there. And if they do that, this will be a premier facility for the years to come. That's all I have.
Okay, and again, I want to thank Jim for his unbelievable stewardship through this whole construction project. Just a couple of quick things, I'll ask the Board if they have anything for Mr. Pedro. We will be doing a full water update later in the meeting, once we get back on track, hopefully it'll be soon. And there were a couple of contracts that were over $25,000 that, that Mr. Pedro's allowed to approve under certain conditions, and I just want to let people know that one of those contracts is, the Rec Department is rehabbing the five tennis courts at the Old Gates, and that is, that was, that's gonna be great, because those courts are gonna be beautiful too, as well. The other contracts were for vehicles that were approved at town meeting, that were purchased. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Pedro?
Quick question, Jim. Do you know why the COVID numbers for people that are out of state impact the town of Situette? A resident asked me this evening. So if a, if a college kid is going to school in Arizona and he gets COVID, how does that impact what's going on in Situette?
It will eventually have to be reported to the state in Massachusetts, because they are Massachusetts resident, and it will show up eventually on our COVID count, as a Situette count. Just like someone in a nursing home from Situette in another town eventually comes back on our number.
I know, but that's not really the best indicator of what's going on in our town.
No, that's why, that's why I cut them out in the report, Tony, and said we really just had one case in the past week that was a definite Situette case.
A Situette resident, okay, great.
Anyone else? Okay, the last, oh, Karen, did you want to say something? No?
No.
Last thing I do want to note is that we received in our backup package the year-to-date grants received, so just since we have such a large audience, our staff, depending on what lane they're in and what their responsibilities, will seek as many out-of-town grants as possible to offset local costs. And to date, that number is $912,000 that the, our town employees have succeeded in achieving as grants, so congratulations.
The last one we got last week was almost $200,000 for an additional green energy, green community grant, so that's up to almost $1 million in green community, green energy, so that's going very well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, I'm sorry to delay, our next agenda item at 6:45 is to acknowledge one of Situette's own, Mr. Steve Rogers, and I believe Mr. McGinnis and Rick Casey are here. Seth, can you unmute all three, or can you find them, or do I need to do that?
I will try to find them.
He's the man behind the curtain. Mr. Rogers, we received a letter, the Board of Selectmen received a letter from Mr. Casey, who is a friend of Mr. Rogers and has worked at, in the harbor, at what is now the Village Market for over--
Oh, wow. No, I'm good. You got it now? Oh, okay. Okay.
All right, we got Steve.
Okay.
Mr. Casey, are you unmuted?
I'm on site.
All right, Mr. McGinnis?
Can we-- It's better than security.
Mr. McGinnis is still muted.
Your place.
So is Mr. Casey.
Okay, hold on. Sorry, guys, you are the--
Who's can unmute too?
Oh, Mr. McGinnis does not have audio activated, so you, if you can hear us, there should be a little icon at the bottom of your screen on the left that would allow you to be heard. Oh, and Mr. Casey, I will unmute you. Oh, wrong one, sorry, Malina, it's not you. Rick Casey, here we go.
Hello?
Okay. Hi, Mr. Rogers, how are you? I'm hoping to get your nominees up, so they can tell us a little bit more about your incredible service. I'm hoping to get your, your nominees up so they can tell us a little bit more about your incredible service. I'm not thinking that our technology is getting that happening though. All right, well, we will, we'll, hopefully they can catch up. But we received a letter from Mr. Casey that outlined your incredible service to our community and always being in the harbor before it was Village Market. And you always have greeted everyone in the community with a smile and with service. And your friends wanted to make sure that the town knew of this milestone and thanked you. And they, actually, a proclamation has been written up that, Ms., I have not spoken to our clerk. Are you prepared to read that proclamation?
I am.
You are? Thank you so much. So I'll give one more shout out to Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Casey if you are unmuted and can speak.
I've been unmuted.
Oh, there you are. Okay, great. Would you like to add, sir?
Well, I'd just like to say a few words about Steve. I mean, he's worked for me for almost 20 years. He's done a great job. When I purchased the property from the, not the property, the business, from the previous owners, Steve was part of the deal and we were very happy to have him. As a matter of fact, back in the early 70s, it was a Curtis Farms. And I was 18 years old working in the deli and Steve was hired. And I can kind of recall him being hired up front in the front-end area. And I ended up leaving and going back to work for Star Markets. But Steve was there when I was there, back in the early, early 70s with Curtis Farms. And, and he's done a great job for me. He's never called in sick, even on snow days. He's an employee that everybody would love to have. And he loves our customers. What amazes me is that every customer that walks through the front door, he knows their name, their family, their kids, their grandkids. And it's just, it's amazing to me how valuable he is as, as an employee in taking care of our customers. Steve's kind of retired now. He used to work about 30 hours a week and now he's down to about 12. And he still keeps his nose in the business. And I really think it's absolutely terrific that the town is honoring him after, you know, 50 years of service to the town. And he really is a guy that is dedicated and committed to the townspeople and, and to taking care of them. And he's a real asset to us, his, our business. And I just wanted to congratulate Steve for a job well done and hopefully another 50 years. So thank you, Steve.
You're welcome, Jim.
Would the board like to say something else before we ask Mr. Rogers for his thoughts? Steve, would you like to say something before we read your proclamation? Well, then I will ask Ms. Connolly to read the proclamation, which we will provide to you in a real copy when we, when we see you.
This is the best part about being the clerk. Whereas the Board of Selectmen would like to take this opportunity to honor Stephen E. Rogers, lifelong Situate resident. Whereas Steve has worked in Situate Harbor in the building located at 71 Front Street, currently known as the Village Market, for 50 years. Whereas he began his career September 3, 1970, greeting customers, bagging groceries, and general cleaning at Curtis Farms. Five owners later, Steve's honest, friendly, and gentle manner continues to bring hometown charm to this seaside community. Whereas 40 years ago, Steve's mom passed away, leaving the citizens of Situate as his family. Steve has given us the gift of his joyful nature and kindness that brings out the best in each of us. You will often see Steve in the bleachers cheering on all the Situate High School sports teams or collecting bottles and cans to help others in need. Therefore, be it resolved that Stephen Rogers accepts this resolution with the sincere gratitude of the Board of Selectmen and all the residents of the town of Situate. Steve's caring spirit, daily smile, and kindness to others is welcomed by all of our residents and our community is a better place with you as a resident. Signed this 8th day of September 2020 by the Town of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, Town of Situate, Karen B. Canfield Chairman, Anthony V. Vignani Vice Chair, Karen E. Connolly Clerk, Morrissey Current Member, Andrew Goodrich Member, Kathleen A. Gardner, Town Clerk. Thank you so much, Steve.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yay.
Steve is a, I see Steve down at the coffee shop when, when there's no COVID. And I got to say, I've never met someone more upbeat and happy than Steve. The only time he's even slightly depressed is after the Situate football loses. But even that wears off pretty quick. And I miss seeing him down there. He's the only one that doesn't tell me what I'm doing wrong. He always tells me what I'm doing right. So Steve, I miss Steve. I can't wait to see him again when this, when this clears up a little bit. Because he's just, he's a great way to stop my day when I see him down at the coffee shop.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I'm just sharing this because we have the technology and we can. This is the proclamation. I don't know if you can all see that. All right. Plus, I think it's fun to do that. Thank you so much, guys. We are going to move on to our 650, which is to discuss vote a common vic license for Blackbird Bake Goods. Do we have Melissa available here? Let's see, yep. We will unmute, oh, shoot. I keep, sorry, Melina, I keep hitting you by mistake. Melissa, are you with us?
I am. Can you see us?
Hi, great. Would you, so this is a new business going down on Front Street. That's fabulous. Would you like to tell us about it?
Yes. So my name is Melissa Leets. This is my, I'm here with hus, my husband Scott Leets. Oh, there we go.
There you are.
There we are. So we are looking to join the business community of Situate by opening our bakery on Front Street. Blackbird Bakes Goods would bring goods and services to enrich Situate by offering pies, sweetbreads, cookies, and, you know, the ever-needed cup of coffee. Yeah, so that's us.
Does the board have any questions? I know I'm.
Are you baking bread?
We're doing quick breads, non-yeast breads right now. Once we sort of get established and keep going, then the plan is to introduce yeast breads into the mix.
It's really needed.
We keep hearing that, everyone we talk to.
Just saying. Thank you. Looking forward to it. When are you anticipating opening?
Our goal has been Octo, like mid-October. You know, that's, we're hoping that with like COVID and we need to install some ventilation, that we'll be able to get that ball rolling as soon as possible.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Karen?
And are you, I'm so excited about this. I've always thought I needed a bakery. So congratulations. And are you going in the corner of Otis and Front Street? Is that where you are, right there?
No, right across from this Dunkin' Donuts and CVS over in Creo, the 101.
So are you taking Creo space or the space right of it? Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, it's too bad for them. That's sad, but I'm happy for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I was sold at pies, so that sounds good. I heard that.
That is, that is my specialty, yes.
Thanksgiving orders will be online, I hope?
Yeah, we are already online, so.
All right.
Just through the space.
So we do have all the backup material. Is there anyone attending that would like to comment about the common vic license for Blackbird Bake Goods? Please raise your hand or jump up and down. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve a common vicular's license for Blackbird Bake Goods on, in 101 Front Street, Situate, Massachusetts, pending final Board of Health approval.
Second by Ms. Connolly. We have to do a roll call, vote, and I'm told Lorraine will conduct it. Ms. Canfield? Yes. Screen just froze. Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And it's 5-0 in favor. Welcome to Situate. Looking forward to seeing the doors open.
Thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is to discuss vote Front Street closure with Mr. Bedrow. As everyone knows, we have, for the summer, been closing Front Street partially for. Mr. Desmond, I'll ask you to please take your sign down. It's distracting to the proceedings. Thank you, Desmond. Sorry, what was I saying? So we, Front Street was, yeah, I told you it was distracting. We closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday part of the day to accommodate outdoor seating for the restaurants. And it has now been going on for several months. So we want to review whether, how it's going and what, what, if anything, we should do through the rest of the season. So, Mr. Bedrow. You're muted, Jim.
So as you said, we have, doing this for several months. It's been fairly well-received and fairly successful. However, even before we received the bad news about Reaver, the only two businesses that were still using the street option were the Galley and the Hibernian. Reaver was no longer on the street and Salt Society was no longer on the street. They were just out in front. So really, the only business that we are closing for, in essence, is the Galley because the Hibernian has other options. So I've spoken to all the businesses. The Hibernian, as long as they can keep their tables on the sidewalk that they have, then they are fine with reopening Front Street. I've had several conversations with Brian Houlihan of the Galley. We would work with Brian to do something similar to what they've done in Cohasset, where they've converted some of the parking spaces out in front of the business into spaces that people can sit in on a permanent basis. We could use some Jersey barriers to block those off. So he would have not as many seats as he has when we closed Front Street, but he would have them for a longer period of time during the entire week. As the board knows, we've gotten complaints from the residents of Otis, from the residents of Allen about the traffic and the trucks and things going up their roads. School is starting. The weather is starting to turn a little bit. So as long as we have a, an answer for the Galley, I think it's something we should talk about, no longer closing Front Street. We are getting reimbursed, I think, for a portion of the cost, maybe not all the costs that were occurring down there through our COVID CARES Act. But the last couple of weeks, we've had days where we haven't closed it at all because the weather's been inclement looking. The restaurant owners call us and say with the weather, we're probably not going to close this day and we leave it open. But I think if we can accommodate the Galley and still allow the Hibernian to be on the sidewalk, then we can reopen the street and still accommodate the businesses and do something to help them during COVID. So before it got too cold, got too late, I thought I'd come to the board and see what your thoughts were. The businesses have been told they're still out there, at least through next weekend, depending on what happens tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Board, do you have comments on, on Front Street? Yep, Tony.
Jim, were you saying that the Galley would go?
So what we do with the Galley, if you go over to Cohasset, what they did for a couple of restaurants is they blocked off the parking spaces in front using Jersey barriers so that if someone drives by and loses control, they hit a barrier and they allow them to use those parking spaces out in front of their facility for tables and seating. So we could do that with the Galley.
Have you spoken to them?
I have, and he's, he's amenable to that.
Okay. Well, I guess that's, I mean, that's the biggest thing. You know, I think it's been a huge success down there. And I think, you know, at some point, we should consider it every year. But we don't want to do anything that's going to, you know, stifle, stifle those businesses that are struggling so much right now. So if he's amenable to it and he thinks it's a good idea and it'll be the wider parking spots, then I'm fine with it.
Anyone else from the board have a input?
I do.
Yep.
Yeah. Maura here. I've seen this setup in Cohasset. I've driven by it. That's, this safety just concerns me a little bit on Front Street. It's a much easier street than where I think Dulies has blocked off. I know there's a small piece on Main Street, which is tight. So I, I just worry about the safety of our residents in that type of a situation. But I obviously want to support, you know, the Galley as much as we can. So I don't know, Jim, if you have any thoughts about that. I'm just a little concerned about going onto the road and.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to the chief of police and also DPW director. And we'll do the, the Jersey barriers and we'll connect them so that they're not individual. And we'll also put those new barriers in front of them so they're more visible, so people can see them. But I think from a public safety standpoint, I think we can do this. It's also being done in Plymouth. It's being done in a lot of towns. I haven't heard of any incidents with any of them. As with anything else, we'll have to do some enforcement early on and make sure the police are down there keeping the traffic down through the, through Front Street. But I think from a public safety standpoint, it's something we can do.
And, okay. And, and then secondly, how long are we proposing to have this scenario?
Right now, the board's vote for the outdoor dining and for the closing of Front Street is through November 1st.
November 1st? Okay, I couldn't remember that. Okay. That's all I have, Karen.
We used to put cones in the middle of the road too. And that tend to slow people down also. No, those.
Yeah, something I could talk to DPW Public Safety about. The other, some parts of town, we have these signs on the crosswalks, the pedestrian signs that slow people down. So we could look into those too. They might be a little more long-lasting and meaningful than cones. But yeah, we could look into those, Tony.
Yeah, they're not cones. They're more thinner, but.
That's a good point. I was thinking of that as well, as if we can put some signs at the crosswalk, at least it will slow the traffic down as they, you know, drive south down Front Street.
Yep.
I assume you review this for the police department?
I have.
Board, any other comments?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Yes. So this is ending no matter what we do on November 1st. Is that right?
The board could extend it, but right now, your approval for the outdoor dining ends November 1st. I think at that point, Karen, you're really getting it to.
Snow. Yeah, it's too cold.
Too cold, too nasty to be inside. Hopefully lots of rain at that point, so we'll fill in the reservoir too.
Well, I guess the point I'm trying to make is it's really only a few more weeks, whatever, based on, you know, a November 1st. So, yeah, I, you know, I think we certainly want to help the Galley. But if I recall, I think that we did this when there was no indoor dining at all. So I think that now that there is some indoor dining, at least that gives him, you know, a little more room inside to be able to accommodate people. So any more complaints about the traffic, Jim? Or did rerouting it back through the coal parkway kind of solve that?
It, it didn't solve it. Takes about half the traffic complaints away from Otis because half the traffic's not going up. But we're still going to complain to Otis. We're still going to complain to Allen. They're just not used to the volume of the cars going up there. When you have that many cars, they, they seem to be going fast. We have done enforcement. Speed doesn't seem to be the issue, but they seem to be going fast. And there's a lot of them compared to what those people normally see. They would see them on Heritage Days and things like that, especially Allen. But that's for a limited time and this has been for the summer. So and I think the concerns are going to start growing a little bit with the schools reopening and kids either walking to school or getting buses to school. Just, again, just being down there, there's only two of the businesses that are out right now. So we're spending a lot of time, a lot of energy to accommodate those two businesses. And I think we can accommodate them in a different way.
Right.
Without inconveniencing as many people as we tend to inconvenience with the closures.
I'm all in favor of that.
If the board doesn't have any other questions, I know Mr. DiNoffrio is called in and he's, as most of you know, the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Mark, would you like to opine on this in any way? Are you there?
Hi, thank you, Karen. How are you all tonight? Yeah, Karen asked me to poke my head in and talk. I guess you had some video, you can see who I am.
There you are.
Thanks for letting me in. So, you know, again, I guess, you know, my immediate concern was, you know, would we, you know, stop the, you know, the momentum that was carried through July and August for the restaurants? But a hearing from Jim that, that they all seemed to be in lockstep with the plan, I don't see that there's any issue there. We had heard a couple of merchants kicking back that it was, they believed it was affecting traffic to the, to their stores. I don't think it was widespread, but we did, to let you know, we did hear a few. We're obviously generally concerned about what's to come for the fall. about what's to come for the fall and into the winter for Situance businesses. Obviously, they did not get where they, most did not get where they would need it to be through the summer, where they normally would be, if you will, to, to carry through the winter. So we're trying to come up with some ideas to see what, you know, how we might be able to push business down to, you know, into the shops in Situate and maybe provide some assistance in that regard, getting into the off months. It is rather discouraging to hear a few closures. Things have been going relatively well, I think, up until the last week or so, hearing about a couple of Crayo this evening. I wasn't aware of that one, but Reva we heard about. And I believe there's one other shop downtown that's planning to close. We had heard there's a few others struggling. Welcome any input or ideas. We're going to have a couple, a forum coming up with the local, the businesses, inviting them to come, share with us their ideas and concerns, and see what we can't do to work together to, to drive some business for these guys through, through the fall and winter.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to discuss the Front Street closures? I do not see, raise your hand or jump up and down. Everybody's being shy. No one's on video anymore. Oh, Stephanie, yes. There you go. Could you give your name and address, please?
Stephanie Burke, 93 Marion Road, Situate, Mass. I'm just curious, in this discussion, are there any, were the business owners made aware of this via an announcement or anything? I know they're business owners, and they have the right to sign on, but I also know a lot of business owners maybe aren't Situate residents. So I'm just curious if this discussion was made public to them directly.
About whether or not to change the Front Street?
Yeah, I'm just curious if it could be able to, or is that going to be a separate discussion that you're going to hold with the business owners and able to give feedback or any discussion?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good question because it obviously impacts them the most. I know Mr. Bedrow has been down to Front Street to talk with a number of the businesses, and Mr. D'Onofrio and the Chamber and Situate Loves Local have sent down emissaries about, just throughout the whole process, to see how things are going. And this is a posted meeting, so I'd be surprised if...
It's a posted meeting. Yeah, but, you know, a lot of people aren't Situate residents that own businesses down there, and I just think for a matter that's this important, you know, an individual letter next to each business, letting them know this discussion is happening, just for transparency reasons, could be something that could be better well-received to make sure that you have the input from all the business owners. I mean, I just can imagine how busy they are at this time, moving into fall and trying to figure out how that we're, you know, going to survive moving into the fall and winter season.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. I'm sure that Jim's already got notification plans, so, but we'll definitely keep that in mind. Thanks.
And as Mark pointed out, the feedback has been good. Some businesses are very happy with the street closures. There are other businesses down, and the feedback is that it's negatively impacting their businesses. So, you know, for those that's helped, you've, you've got a couple of months where it's really helped your business, maybe at the expense of some of your neighbors, and it's time that we, I think, looked at some of those people who are not having a good experience with this and try to balance this out a little bit.
Okay. I see another hand up. Mr. Dougherty, let's see. We can get you on, and please keep your name and address when, when you get unmuted. Connor?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Yep, hi.
I just wanted to note for the record, I don't think folks are shy and turning off their cameras. Our cameras were turned off for us by the host. That's all. Thanks.
Oh, okay, thanks. Are there any other comments about Front Street closure? Okay, I will note to the board that our next item is to discuss an entertainment license for Out of the Blue, which is on September 19th. That's a week from Saturday, and I believe that will require the street to be closed. So if we are to change things, I would like you just to, I mean, we, maybe what we do is wait and have not a vote on this and have that discussion next, and vote them all together. What does the board feel on that?
What date is being proposed?
September 19th, a week from Saturday. It's the next agenda item.
No, no, to shut Front, to change the...
I don't think, did you propose a date, Mr. Bedrow?
That this coming weekend would be the last weekend that they would be open.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's, I believe that it's not cold enough, that people aren't going to utilize it through the month of September. So I don't think...
If you want to extend it for the week, that's, for another week, that's fine, too. The business owners just want to know so they can plan and get their staffs in place. So you wanted to extend it to the weekend, that'd make it the 20th would be the last day, Sunday the 20th would be the last day. I'm really agnostic about it. I just thought we had to have this discussion because, again, we're putting in a lot of effort, and really, the Galley is, is the only one without some other place to go. So I thought if we could accommodate them, you know, we could take care of some...
Well, Hibernia is out there on the street as well, and, you know, it, it brings a vibrancy to the whole area. You know, people are walking around, people are going to other places, people are walking down to TK's, you know.
I'm not arguing with you, Tony. That's why I said if the board wanted to extend it, that's fine. Right now, I've just told them next weekend, and then the board will decide tonight whether or not it's going to go beyond that or not.
Other comments? Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, no, I'm, Tony, I'm, I'm with you. I mean, I, I'd be open to, at least going to the 20th, and then, what, our next meeting is what, the 22nd? Is that right? And then, right, so then if we realize that, oh, this, we could change it back. Is that, is that right, Jim?
If we had to... You could vote this, well, any meeting you want to change it. Again, the businesses usually want a week, 10 days notice.
Right.
So I would inform them tomorrow that it's going to be open for another week, at least, so they can plan for that. You know, if you told them two days before, they'd be like, we can't get our staff. We've already scheduled everything, and it's too late at this point.
Got it. All right, that makes sense.
Right. And I actually think to Ms. Burke's point, that having a little time to inform people, but not going back and forth is, is a better idea. I mean, people, they just got used to this thing, so I don't want to change it too much. So, do, does the board wish to make a motion on this right now, or do you want to wait until we do the next agenda item? We can do them both together.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry?
I move the board to select and discontinue the closure of Front Street effective September 20th, and revoke the temporary extension and premises and outdoor seating located on Front Street.
Point of clarification? A motion by Mr. Vignani, a second by Ms. Kern. Is that a question or a second?
Second.
A point of clarification, Mr. Vignani. Will the street be closed on the 20th or closed on the 21st? So there will be no Sunday?
There will be Sunday.
There will be Sunday, but no street closure?
No. It's, I, I thought Sunday was the 20th.
It is.
So, so it'll be closed through the 20th. And so that Sunday would be closed as well.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify expectation there. Okay.
So, effective through September 20th.
Another point, do we need to amend that to clarify if we're going to give space to Galley and the street? Do that as a separate vote, or how do you want to?
No, that'd be, when we get that set up, we'd have to have another plan. I would approve it, and then we'd come back to the board for a separate approval.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Vignani, a second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote is required.
Ms. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to discuss Nancy Jones has come back for another fashion show. I'm guessing Nancy's iPhone is Nancy Jones?
Nick Jones. Nick Jones. She should be unmuted.
She's, okay, Seth says you're unmuted already. Nancy, are you there?
I am, yes.
Oh, great. Good. Well, we, you had a very successful fashion show earlier in the summer, and I assume you want to do another. Would you like to tell us about it?
I, I would like to do another one. It was fun, and it was very successful. Everyone had a great time. And I asked for the 19th of September, but I have to go to Chicago.
Oh, no.
I was going to ask for the 26th, the following Saturday.
Hmm.
Hmm.
So the, so the application has been amended, and as you just heard, we just voted to close Front Street on the 20th. Do you have, do you have a plan B if the street's not closed?
Sure, we can, how about the 17th?
On that Thursday?
What day is that?
The street will be closed at four, what time does it close on Thursdays? Four?
Yes.
Four o'clock, and your event is from 5:00 to 7:00?
Well, it will probably be dark by 7:00, so probably 5:00 to 6:30, and then we'll get the chairs right out and close up.
Is there any objection to amending the application by the, from the board? Mr. Bedrow, do you have any concerns about that?
Oh, you're going to call me at that?
Okay, and that will be within the window? Good. Is there any, any questions for Ms. Jones?
Uh, no. Oh, good.
Mara?
I was just curious, how successful was your last event?
Well, not all the chairs were taken, but lots of people who were dining came and watched and stood around.
Good.
Then, after we closed, a few people came into the shop and bought, but lots of people were calling in, and they had said, oh, it's too bad you didn't give us much notice, just because I had to wait till you approved it, and then it was that Friday night. So there wasn't much advertising.
So this one should help you a little bit better, then?
Yes, this will be great.
Okay, great. Good. Thanks.
Motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve a special event to Nancy Jones, Out of the Blue, for a fashion show on September 17th, 2020, from, I'm going to give you a 4:00 to 7:00, 4:00 PM till 7:00 PM, pending receipt of a certificate of insurance.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. He was first. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Good. Well, we'll look forward to that and hope for good weather.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item, 710, oh, we're going to have to speed it up here, gets, Matt Elder is requesting an Untold Brewery one-day malt and wine license and an outdoor entertainment permit. Hello, Matt.
Hi.
Good. Third anniversary?
Third anniversary. Hard to believe.
Tell us all about it.
Yeah, so the past two years, we've kind of held a, I don't know, a special party for everyone in town, where we shut down the parking lot. We have live music, games. It's been very well-attended. I think it's gone over really well. We haven't had any incidents at all, really, and tried to do the same thing this year until everything kind of blew up on the world. So we're doing it a little differently this year. Hopefully, we're going to make it a smaller, ticketed, private event, and limiting it to 50 people. The plan is to do two concerts with dinner served by Oro, and we would have everybody seated, serve only our beer. We'd have two shows with a kind of two-hour intermission in between, so we can clear everybody out, clean, sanitize, and then do the second show. There would be food. We'd serve our, our beer, and it'd just be a much smaller kind of, you know, intimate affair, I guess. So that, that was the plan for this year. You know, we've, our taproom's been closed to the public since mid-March, when everything happened. So we're trying to just still give back to, you know, the community and do something fun for, you know, people who can attend. So just have to go about a little differently this year with everything that's happened.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Board, questions?
No, I think it's a great idea. They've been really, I think Untold Brewing has done a great job adjusting to COVID.
Thanks.
COVID rules, so I, as long as you're, it sounds like you have a nice structured program with, you know, the invitation only and, and all the, the appropriate social distancing. So I wish you luck, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I had a couple, just a quick questions. What's the number you think is the max attending? I missed that in the backup.
So we'd have two sessions. The max, the tickets that we'd sell would be 50 per session.
50 each session, okay. And then I assume that the police have reviewed your parking and all of that, or?
The parking lot, I mean, we're going to encourage people to park up at the MBTA lot like last time.
Like last time, okay.
The last two years, and then, you know, walk down or have someone drop them off, and then park up at the MBTA lot. But yeah, the whole parking lot will be shut down.
Okay, great. And do you have a plan B for the weather?
We have tents.
We have tents, okay.
Yeah, it might just take the fingers-crossed approach, and, yeah. We, we do have individual tents that we used, actually, at Heritage Days last year in our storage. So the idea, if it is bad weather, is to place a tent over each table.
Okay. And do, do you want to tell us who's performing? And also, of course, have you told them, you've told your neighbors about this, right?
Yeah, I sent letters to our, all our butters. We have Blacktop Strut as one band, and we are working on confirming the second band, so, yeah, hopefully it'll be a lot of energy for, for the affair.
Okay, great.
Karen, one question?
Yeah.
Matt, is there any way that you could put cones or something on the parking? When people, when you're full, people tend to park further down Country Way towards Reynolds, on that little stretch of street, and it really gets dangerous when they pass, park past where they should. You know, there's certain areas where they can park, and it's fine, but they tie and jam them in and go in there, and that makes Country Way very narrow, especially on that curve in the road.
Yeah.
So I don't know what thoughts you have about making sure people don't park there?
Yeah, every year, I feel like we add more no-parking signs, because people find a way. Yeah, that's absolutely in the plan to, we do have leftover signs from last year, so block off the street kind of, I guess, towards Reynolds after the driveway there, where it gets narrow onto Country Way.
Yeah, just that one little, you know, probably 30 feet there or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, Jim, if we have Jersey barriers or something that people won't be able to move, or some way to assist him so people don't park there, because at night, it's just, it's just a dangerous turn.
Yeah, I mean, if it's dangerous for cars, I'm not sure if you put Jersey barriers, it's going to be any, any better, but it's something we could take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be up against a curb, so people would know not to park there, but wouldn't stick out as far as a car. I don't know. Think about it and see what we can do.
I mean, I think the other thing, Tony, is this capacity is so much smaller than what they normally have. You know, I'm not sure there's going to be that level of parking, but we could take a look at it, yeah.
Anyone else have any comments about the application? Is there anyone in the attending that would like to comment on the Untold Brewery one-day license request? I'm looking, no hands. Okay, I'll take a motion. I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve an outdoor entertainment application for Untold Brewing on October 10th, 2020, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Up, up. Ms. Kern got under the wire on that one. Second by Ms. Kern. Any further discussion? All in favor, recall it requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Five want to approve. I have a motion for the permit.
Move to approve a one-day beer and wine permit for Untold Brewing on October 10th, 2020, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
I'm not going to play Jeopardy.
We all need buzzers. Roll call vote is required.
Ms. Canfield? Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, well, good. We're looking forward to it, and I'm sure it'll be a success, and... Um, great, well, good, we're looking forward to it, and I'm sure it'll be a success, and looking forward to getting back on your patio someday.
Me both, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, our next, uh, before we go on to the 7:20, because we're, we're making up time pretty fast, um, I just want to, um, I, I think that everyone at home, when you are watching this, you just see whoever's speaking. The co-hosts can see everyone, and there have been some people that have been taking the opportunity to distract. Uh, somebody's unmuted, to distract from the meeting. Um, I would prefer to have everyone's video, because, yeah, it's just easier to see if, for some reason, you didn't raise your hand on the, on the chat function, I can see if somebody is interested in participating. Uh, but I will, um, really ask you to respect that we are trying to get town business done, it's not the time or place to, um, distract from that, and should that occur again, then we will, um, we will selectively take off the video, so, I hate to be that person, but, um, I think it's better process if we can see people, unless the board has any objection, I, um, you know, for my old eyes, it's easier to see real people. So, I'll ask our, uh, our admin wizard to, uh, to do that, and ask everyone to, uh, respect the rules of, of engagement, so that we can get through our business. So, Ms. Frank, I'm sorry to delay, you're 7, uh, 7:20, it's now 7:46. Um, Jane Frank is here to discuss the, um, use of the Old Gates Building for, uh, the Situate Food Pantry. So, I will turn it over to Jane, I know she's presented before, but, um, if you could refresh us and those who are, um, watching, um, about the issue, that would be great.
Sure, thanks, Karen. Um, we are back to request the, uh, food pantry moved into the B wing of the Old Gates Building, specifically the cafeteria space. Uh, we had requested this in February, and with the renewed interest by the Board of Selectment in utilizing the building for some profitable, um, turn, we would like to request that the food pantry be allowed to occupy the cafeteria. Um, I included with my request, the outline of February, the, uh, fourth request, and that was to, um, have a memorandum of understanding put together by the food pantry, and with the approval of the town, under which we would occupy the space. Um, we can pay rent, we are able to do that. Um, we would suggest that it would be the proportionate amount of the utilities that would be required to run the place. And we also would provide a certificate of insurance, um, to notify the town that would be part of that. And I just wanted to do a little update on, on what we've been doing during the lockdown from March 17th. Um, our statistics for that time, which is about 25 weeks or a little over six months, that we have had 30 new families join the ranks of those who are depending on the food pantry in Situate. We've distributed 7,801 bags of groceries to those families. Uh, we've upped our home delivery system, and we're now serving, um, during that time, 172 people who are homebound. We've purchased through our access of, with the Greater Boston Food Bank, 34,741 pounds of food, which we have distributed to people in Situate, and also had donated by Shaw's, another 7,615 pounds of food. We are not able to take donations at the present time, as we have not the whole time, because of the manpower or volunteer power it would take to sanitize all that material, check all that material. So, we're still depending on just monetary donations and our access to the Greater Boston Food. So, if anybody has any questions, this was all done, by the way, with a staff of 12 volunteers, it's March 17th, which I wanted to just recognize and commend all those folks for doing this every single week. It's been a labor of love.
Just, just for the board, the reason we had to put it back on the agenda, uh, obviously, they wouldn't be able to start until the senior center project was done, uh, so, we have that roadway that goes around, but there is some work that would have to be done, uh, to the building, to allow the access, to make those, uh, access available. Uh, we'll discuss with Jane, who's gonna be responsible for what, and those access improvements, some of it, um, Nancy, don't listen, I don't wanna give you a coronary, um, some of it, uh, could be COVID reimbursed, uh, because of the food pantry and what we're doing there, uh, but they are out of space at the Masonic Lodge. They really don't have the ability to do what they need to do, to the extent that they're doing it. The use of the building in terms of utilities, I think would be minimal, minimal, unless they did start using the freezer and refrigerator, because we have heat on in the building, we have lights on in the building. Um, so, uh, I think having someone in the building on a, on a regular basis, particularly where it's mostly empty, is a good thing, from my point of view, if something does happen to the building, there's, there's gonna be eyes on it. But I think it's something we could do, if the board wants to do it, uh, we can make the necessary improvements, and really, the, the demand for this during this pandemic has, has skyrocketed, as Jane said, and I don't see it going down, uh, when the pandemic goes away, I think it's gonna stay high. So, if we can find them a home, um, in the short term, while we look for use of the building, and they look for a permanent home, I think it's, it's good for us and it's good for them. So, the reason it's back on the agenda is we would have to do some work, they will have to do some work, and we need the time to get that done, before they would be able to move in, um, sometime after the first of the year, when the senior center project is completed.
Uh, any further questions from the board on this matter? Nope, uh, my only question is, oh, go ahead, Ann.
I mean, I guess, understanding the scope of work, I mean, can you pull something together that tells us what, what needs to be done, I'm, I'm 100% in, in favor of letting the food pantry use that space. But I think we just have to understand what has to be done to the building before, before we do that.
My original conversations with, uh, Kevin Kelly, uh, Tony, was, obviously, the locks, we have to demise the space somehow and allow us access. There is the stair lift in two stairwells, that we would only need to activate one of those. We need a working bathroom, we don't need a men's and a women's, we just need one. Um, we would also probably have to, um, have some, maybe some electrical, I don't know exactly how the electrical capacity is in there, we do have some freezers that we would be bringing over, so we just wanna make sure that that would work. I think the water has to be reestablished into the space, because I know that there is an auction and that some of the material was sold, and I think the water was demised at some point, so we're gonna have to reestablish that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the big, the big guys would be the lift, and finding a way to, uh, flack about a term, seal off that space, so people couldn't access the remainder of the building from that space. Um, not huge work, but, um, yeah, I can get a scope of that together, if you have it.
Yeah, if you can, that'd be great. But otherwise, it's a great space for you guys, you know, it'd be single level, you know, kitchen facilities, um, better spacing for your employees or your helpers, or, um, so I think, I think it would be a great fit.
Uh, anyone else from the board have a comment, Mara?
I do, first of all, Jane, thank you to you and your entire staff for all the work that you've done, um, in the past, and also now, in these, these trying times, I know, we need it more than ever. Um, with that being said, I, I, I so disagree with putting the food pantry here for a number of reasons. Number one, I think the space is in horrible shape, it's a building that we are charged with trying to, determine its final outcome, and if it's not suitable for teachers and students to be there, I don't think it's suitable for any of our residents to be in there, coming in and, um, picking up, um, you know, their supplies and needs. Um, we, this did come before us in February, so I'm curious, you know, wh- what other searches have taken place in the past six to eight months? At that time in February, you were in dire need of space, and so, I think that's why it came up for consideration, so, I'm curious what else has been looked at, there are a lot of vacancies in town now, due unfortunately to, uh, businesses closing down and times being tough, so, I'm curious, um, what type of search has happened in the meantime?
We have done a lot of searching prior to coming to you in February, Mara, um, a lot of spaces just don't lend themselves to functionally doing what we needed to do. Um, we don't have any conference space or private space where we are now. The large, wide-open layout of the cafeteria would allow us to demise some of that space, to give our, uh, clients some privacy, and when you talk to them about financial matters, right now, no one's coming into the space at the Masonic Temple, except our volunteers, but looking forward to the future, obviously, we want something to, to work a little bit better. During COVID, right now, um, at the Masonic Temple, some of our storage is on the third floor, it's very difficult to run up and down a very small set of stairs. Again, the cafeteria is a wide-open space and would lend itself to that kind of improved functionality. We would be able to store our food better, inventory our food better, have our volunteers be able to find it.
Nope, no, I, I understand the benefits, I'm just curious what else you've looked in the meantime. Um, this isn't the most optimal building in our, in our town.
A lot of the buildings, um, that we've looked at, just simply don't fit the functionality and the needs that we have, so, and a lot of the open buildings right now are stale buildings, and we would have to ma- mount a capital campaign, which we would fully intend to do, but in the meantime, we're looking for something that would give us a little bit more functionality and give us time to run such a capital campaign.
And Jim, a question for you, what's the timing that we're looking at if, um, we're waiting for the senior center site to be appropriate for people to be traveling on, because that's another.
We wouldn't move in until the, it was open, we wouldn't move until January.
January, they're, they're right now on schedule, so.
So, until the senior center is completed, okay.
Right.
Mr. Goodrich, did you have a comment?
It was just asked about the timing, so.
Okay, very thorough. Um, anyone else from the board have a question, comment? Okay. Yes, Ms. Cur, uh, Ms. Conley?
I was gonna, what am I doing wrong? Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, I think this idea is that it is temporary, am I correct?
It is.
So, um, you know, I understand Mara's concerns, and at back when this was originally proposed, I had concerns as well. But I think if we're, we're all have the understanding that this is a temporary solution, um, I would be in favor of it, with the understanding that we do have to do something with the building, and who knows what and when, but it, um, you know. Um, and I just, I guess I have a question, if, and, and this is almost opportunity for you to ask. Um, you're accepting donations from the public to help you, but only monetary, is that right?
That's correct.
And the monetary donations are then used to go shopping at supermarkets, or go to the food bank, or wh- where does the money go from there?
It's mostly to the Greater Boston Food Bank, they are charging us, although not full price, they are charging us for our food.
Right, I, I assume they would have to be, they've gotta, they've cut their own problems, right? So, um, so, I would encourage anyone to send you monetary donations to help out, um, right now, so, thank you.
So, uh, before I open it up to the public for any questions, um, I'll just remind us, what we're voting on is to draft a memorandum of agreement, so, um, the terms will still need to be revised. I assume, Jim, are we drafting, or is the pantry drafting that?
We'll do it.
We'll draft it, one, and then incorporate in that will obviously be a estimate of the costs and how, how the, um, how those costs are gonna be covered.
Yep.
Exactly, um, so, we're not voting on, you know, just a blank check to go do this. Um, I will, if the board has any other com, does not have any other comments, I'll see if anyone in the public attending would like to comment on the food pantry's application to go into the B wing. And I'm looking, I don't see any hands or jumping up and down, so, um, I will ask for a motion.
Move to draft a memorandum of understanding between the tenant Situate and Situate Food Pantry to allow the use of the building, of the B wing cafeteria at 327 First Parish Road, Situate, Massachusetts. All responsibilities and timeframes will be outlined in the memorandum of understanding, which will include, uh, include a scope of the project to get the building usable.
Motion by Mr. Vign, Vignani, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Conley, is there any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, it requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
No.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-1, um, and Jim, if you would take a crack at drafting that as soon as we can, so we can start putting this together, that'd be great.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, too. Um, we are now into 7:40, um, to discuss vote, contract, award to special vehicles for a new ambulance, and our fire chief, John Murphy, is in a box somewhere, there he is. Mr. Murphy, would you like to tell us about the new ambulance? Chief, you're still muted here, hold on.
Okay.
There you are.
Good evening, yeah, I'm here to request the, uh, board to approve, uh, construction, the contract for construction of a new ambulance, for $360,410. It's the exact same ambulance we purchased four years ago, all the paramedics are extremely happy with it, it's very functional, fits our needs, and it's been, uh, the last ambulance is, is, is very durable, it's working out well for us, so, we're looking to get the same exact ambulance with a couple of minor modifications.
Okay, and this was approved in annual town meeting, um, in, uh, June of this year?
Correct.
Board have any questions about this?
I do, yes, Ms. Conley. I, in the background information, there's a line that says, "The town purchased the E1 pumper through HGAC by in 2018, as well as playground equipment for the North Situate Playground." I don't understand what that means.
It's just the purchasing agent we go through, it's actually saving us some money, so, we use it for a pumper to Houston, Houston Galveston, um, area, something, but it's, it's basically a purchasing group that we go through to purchase these vehicles.
So, in other words, that you're using a group, that, a, a, a company that also purchased the playground equipment for North Situate?
It's, it's actually just, it's the tool, the model we use to go through and do the bidding process for, to build this, it's not the company that's built it, but it was the company that, um, there's, there's several, several companies out there that we can go through to put the bidding process to get these ambulances, and Nancy could explain this better, but we use the Houston Galveston one for our pumper, basically, and long story short, it saves us a couple of thousand dollars to go that route.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm, I'm asking why there is a reference in this background information to playground equipment.
Nancy, would you like to clarify?
Um, it, it was just to identify the method of procurement. It wasn't to, um, for anything other than that, so, we have procured other things to this purchasing cooperative.
Including the playground equipment at North Situate?
Yes.
It, it was just very confusing to me that somehow or other, playground equipment was in with the ambulance, so.
I, I understand.
Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Does anyone else from the board have a comment or a question?
I do.
Ms. Curran?
Um, John, are you taking one offline, or where the, where this put us?
Yeah, so, the three town that's basically a 2003 will come offline, it's only shared with Noah, Cohasset, Hingham, that'll come offline, that's gonna have to go out to auction, so there's no trade capabilities there, and to tell you through, it's not worth much right now, they really didn't want it, um, but that's the one that's gonna come offline, and our rescue two will go as our third rotating one, so we'll have, uh, one purchased four years ago, an 07, I think, 12, and then, uh, 13, and a, uh, in this coming year, it'll be 2020, so, that ambulance is still available to use.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And they, just from financial, the auction proceeds, how does that get allocated, Nancy?
So, since it was purchased from multiple municipalities, the, um, proceeds would have to go back to the different municipalities.
Okay, General Thun?
Yes, Ross, yes.
Um, all right, uh, are there any additional questions, Mr. Goodrich?
Uh, so, I mean, and, and maybe, this is maybe more for Nancy, I don't know, I mean, this 360,000, is that, is that really, is that an average cost for an ambulance? I mean, I'll play the guy, let's see what an ambulance costs, you know, Arrow Ambulance, you can do, it says $150,000, other places, equipment, an extra 50, 60,000, is that? I mean, I know we use that purchasing, is that typically what other towns are, that's what it's going for, or?
Yeah, that's the standard now, Andrew, uh, there was some price, price increases, now the electronic stretches with rollover protection, and now mandated, we actually were fortunate to get a grant for two of those, uh, just prior to our last purchase, so we did not include that, so, uh, but this, this year, we don't have a contract, a, uh, a grant for that, so that's included in the price, so that's, that's. price. So that's about $60,000 itself.
Stretcher?
Yes.
I'm in the wrong business.
You and I both.
Any further questions or comments from the board on this matter? Is anyone from the, I've got a raised hand. Thank you for using your. Ms. Coon, could you please state your name and address for the record? Are you there? You're dancing in San Francisco. Hold on. Jen, can you hear me?
He needs to be unmuted.
Yeah, we're requesting, oh, there you go.
Okay. So I'm actually going back to the food pantry, because I don't think that you're seeing people's hands raised.
Oh, shoot. Well, Jen, shoot. Now that's, now I got a problem because we have.
Yeah. I think it started with public comment for the walk-in zoom-ins.
Unfortunately, I need to conclude this business. And let us conclude this business if it's not about the ambulance and I can address the.
I'll lower my hand. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Any comments? I apologize if it's, if it's, if your hands not showing up. But I would say if you, if I don't call on you in the open period, if you could take your video off and wave to us, that helps, too. And we'll try not to miss anybody again. If I see, I don't see any other comments about the ambulance, I entertain a motion. Move to award a contract to Specialty Vehicles Incorporated for a new 2020 Dodge Ram 5500 Lifeline Super Liner Type I-AD ambulance in the amount of $360,410. And a motion by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Goodrich. Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mrs. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes five zero. John, before we go on to the next thing, Jen, I will unmute you. I apologize for overlooking you. We're out of, out of protocol, but I don't want you to think that it was intentional. So if you would keep your comments short and give your address, that would be great. If it's on. We're trying. Oh, you're talking. Hold on, we don't hear you. I see your mouth, but it's not unmuted.
Hello? Okay. Jennifer Kuhn, 20, Cary Litchfield Lane. And regarding the food pantry on the Gates property, there is a planning board restriction or a condition, I call it number 28. So I was wondering when a application would be filed in accordance with the zoning bylaws.
Well, it's not according with the zoning bylaws. It's according to the decision of the zoning board, of the planning board on the cause on aging. Then any change in use of the B wing, we need to go back to the planning board. Now that we've got permission from the board to use the B wing, then we'll have to put an application to the planning board to have a hearing on that. So we'll start working on that.
Okay, so there's also supposed to be a study, a comprehensive integrated review of the site and impacts thereof. Has that also been considered?
We can't do the study until it's done. It's supposed to be a traffic study. Is that what you're referring to, Jennifer, I think?
Well, you could check with planning if you don't understand number 28.
Well, I don't have it in front of me. You have me at a disadvantage. I don't have the decision in front of me.
Well, I'd like you to reference that.
It's supposed to be a comprehensive study and a traffic study. That'll be done when the center's open. There's no point doing it now. There's no activity there. So we wouldn't be studying anything when it's done.
I'm not talking about, it's the property and it references building B.
Right, which is what we have to go back to the planning board for permission to allow the food pantry to be in there, which we will do.
Okay, as long as you're aware. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Nope, well, we weren't going to do that until the board of selectmen said yes.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Jen. All right, now our next article is 7:50, award the contract for OPM services for Widows Walk Clubhouse. Jim Bedrow.
So to be brief, just so people understand, if you have a building project that exceeds 1.5 million in total for everything, you are required to have an owner's project manager, which is a person that oversees the construction for the town. Widow's Walk total will exceed 1.5 million. So we did go out to bid for an OPM. We had nine responses. As you senior packet, I had a committee set up with the golf director, Ian Kelly, the chairman of the Widows Walk Committee, Jim Forsgaard, Kevin Cafferty, and Nancy Holt. They reviewed all nine submissions, gave me the ranked final. I took the top finalist, which was Colliers International. We negotiated a service contract with them. And as the top rated applicant and someone within our budget, we are recommending tonight an OPM contract for Colliers International.
Thanks, Jim. And I'll just note that the recommended contract is below what was estimated when this was brought before us as a, as a project. So that's, are there questions about this contract from the board? I don't see any. Colliers is a great company. We'll be lucky to get them. Are there any comments or questions from the public on the contract for the OPM for the Widows Walk Golf Course? I'm looking really carefully. No one's jumping up and down, and I see no hands. So seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Move to award a contract for owner's project manager services for the Widows Walk Clubhouse renovation project to Colliers International of Boston, Mass. in an amount not to exceed $65,351. Move by Ms. Conley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Vignani. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote.
Mrs. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
The motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and vote DPW contracts. There's two, one for a DPW truck and the other is for engineering and design services for Phase III SCADA. And I think, Sean, are you covering this? Okay, so Sean McCarthy is, Kevin Cafferty is on the agenda, but is unavailable tonight. So we are in the capable hands of Mr. McCarthy tonight.
Well, thank you. At the annual town meeting this spring, $97,000 was approved for the replacement of a 21-year-old vehicle used by Public Grounds. This vehicle is used mainly to transport tree debris from the tree crews, as well as storm debris, to the yards for disposal. It's also been used to carry Jersey barriers and also known to carry field nets from one soccer field to another. I did see Kevin had met with several of the vehicle suppliers, and he did meet with Lloyd and Taylor, who are on the Greater Boston Police Council Cooperative, another group purchasing agency under state contract to Massachusetts for the purchase of this vehicle. It is replacing a 21-year-old truck from 1999.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Is there, are there any comments about this contract or this very old truck replacement?
Sean, if you can just. Explain the trade-in allowance.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Vignani.
The trade-in allowance?
I did see that in the executive action that Kevin had put together. I don't see it called out in the specifics. I'm not sure if Nancy's aware of that or not.
It is on page two.
It's $3,500.
Right.
Is that for the old truck?
That's what I can't answer you. I don't know if it's for that one or another one in the fleet that they're removing. I would say that one.
Bobby, that one, as you said, it could be another one from the fleet that we're getting rid of.
Are there other questions about this from the board? Everyone's shaking their head. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to raise their hand or jump up and down concerning the purchase of this truck?
Mr. Harris on the line.
Okay, I see no, no one dying to talk about the truck, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to order contract to Taylor &amp; Lloyd, Inc. for a 2021 MB SBA cab and Chases &amp; Coomans ISB to replace DPW truck number 2-5 in the amount of $94,985.
Move by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, where are you? Was that Karen? Ms. Conley? Any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mrs. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next is to talk about the engineering and design for Phase III SCADA.
Yeah, this is a continuation of several contracts previously awarded for SCADA at the wastewater treatment plant. And I'll have, I think Will is online tonight to go into a little more detail as to what will be included in this phase.
Mr. Branton, I do not, oh, there you are. Oops, let's see. Are you there? Sorry, I think I might have muted you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Excellent, yep. So this is a continuation contract for the next phase of our SCADA. We'll be replacing equipment, which is now quote unquote legacy equipment for our plant. That's equipment which has limited availability. Should it fail, it'd be very difficult to acquire, and there's limited experts available to troubleshoot. So this is out of date computer equipment that we're replacing at the wastewater plant.
Okay. And the, there have been three town meeting votes about funding for this, '16 and '17 and '19. I think that's right. Nancy will correct me if I'm wrong. She's nodding. Are there any questions about this contract? Any comments? Mara, Ms. Curran?
I just have a question for Will. Will, are we almost, you know, we've been doing a lot of SCADA upgrades over the years. Is there an end to it or is it a continuation? Do they always continuously need to be upgraded, you know, one component or another at a certain juncture?
There's a substantial portion which will come to an end. This is the last substantial portion. And then we'll probably have a 10- to 20-year window where this equipment will be current. And then like all computerized equipment, it's going to become outdated and we will have to constantly upgrade over time. Due to SCADA being integral to wastewater plant operations, you will see SCADA as a topic or a project for the facility in smaller scales ongoing throughout the years, much smaller scale.
Okay, thank you. That's, you answered my question perfectly. Mr. Vignani, are you waving?
Hey, Will, why are we paying Weston and Sampson?
Weston Sampson received the contract for our SCADA upgrades. I apologize, I don't have the exact date. It began prior to me being supervisor for the facility, but I believe it was somewhere between 2015 and 2017 it was awarded to them. And it's been an ongoing project since.
But they are.
They were awarded a contract at the time through the process.
Are they the ones that actually upgraded? They must hire technicians, I mean, and software people to come in and, it's not them that do it, is it?
They are the engineers who are the project manager for these SCADA upgrades. We've been mostly working with the vendor, Wilson Controls, for most of our upgrades as far as the hands-on team in the field.
So is this, is this mostly software? Or is this actually mechanical devices in the equipment?
It's both. The first portion will be equipment and firmware. So there are these large cabinets at the facility where all the equipment kind of runs like a central nervous system back to it. And that spinal cord has to be taken out and a new one put in. And then once they've completed that task, there'll be a whole lot of software tweaks where you've got equipment that dates back from early 70s up to, you know, modern equipment. And there'll be bugs that they'll have to sort out as a result of integrating all that together.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's my point, that this is all computer and data and control type devices. Does Weston and Sampson just bid it out to a technical team to come and do it? I mean, they don't do it.
They don't do the work, they do the design, and then they contract out the actual work to the company that we're looking at tonight, actually. Well, Weston and Sampson is the engineer that designed the SCADA system, isn't that correct, Will?
Correct. So they'll, they'll select the key components and then they'll hire out and vet the firms that can install it.
And then they oversee the installation to make sure that it's installed correctly and working correctly.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Mr. Goodrich?
So I guess I wanted to clarify, just for the folks at home, too. And Will, tell me if I'm wrong about how SCADA works and how vitally important. I think there's what, there's seven pump stations that need to be upgraded. And this essentially, again, just trying to be luminously clear, it's kind of what this does so people understand. It's data, so you're understanding the flow, they're getting radios, power supply, and the computer data to kind of manage the grid. I'm not saying it's a smart grid, but it's, you're understanding the flows on those other pump stations. Is that, do you want to make sure I have that right for people to understand what we're doing?
Yep, that's accurate. And also the fundamental equipment that runs almost every process at the facility and emergency alarms, so that should a condition be heading towards, you know, an event or an emergency, we're alerted well before there's an actual event or emergency and can take action to prevent it.
Got it. Yep, okay. Yeah, it's just, everybody knows with a SCADA system, okay. That's all. Just wanted to make it clear.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the board have a question or comment about the SCADA contract? Seeing none, I will see if anyone attending this meeting would like to comment as well. Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Move toward a contractor Weston and Sampson in the amount of $175,000 for tasks one, four, and eight, as detailed in the October 1, 2018 memorandum, relevant to the wastewater treatment facility SCADA upgrades.
Move by Ms. Vignani, second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mrs. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five zero. We're moving right along to our 8:10. It's a water update. Mr. Cafferty, as we said, is not available today. We have Sean McCarthy. And is Sean Anderson on the line as well?
Mark Cloud is on, the superintendent. Mark is on. He's going to do the update on what's going on with our water system and also based upon all the issues we have at the reservoir, a reportable event that we had that Mark's going to update the board on. So, Mark, if you could just kind of walk the board through what's going on this summer, what improvements were made and the issue that we just had come up recently.
Okay. Our water system recently exceeded the total trihalomethane standard. THMs are disinfectant byproduct common in surface water treatment. Because of this, we will have to send out public notice to all the residents. We are also taking steps to reduce the total trihalomethanes. This was mainly caused because. the total trihalomethanes. This was mainly caused because of the low lake level and higher temperatures, and required us to use more disinfection. But we're going to take steps like putting mixers in our tanks, reducing our chlorine levels, and hopefully also flushing.
So the TTHM level is, we test for is 80 parts per billion. We tested one out of our four tests on August 5th, tested at 88 parts per billion. So how many times a week do we test that, or how many times do we test for that, Mark?
We test four times a year.
So, one of our tests out of the 16 we exceeded, so we'll have to do a notification based on that. But as Mark said, this is a regular byproduct of the disinfecting process. And when we get the stagnation and the high temperatures, it changed the chemical, really contributed, the chemical makeup of the pond, I guess, Mark, for lack of a better way of putting it.
Yes, a lot more algae growth.
Or do we have any questions about that in particular? Mark, how do you, oh, Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, so do, does the public need to be concerned about their health?
No, because it has to be above 80 parts per billion in a lifetime to be a concern.
It, excuse me for not understanding, 80, above 80 parts per billion in a lifetime?
Yeah.
What does that, what does that mean?
A lifetime of exposure to a level above 80 parts per billion is a concern.
So you have to be constantly above that level?
Correct. You need to be exposed to some long periods of time for it to cause problems with your biological systems, I guess, for lack of a better way of putting it.
Well, so-
Whiteout is not going to cause, is not going to cause issues.
So why, why does a public have to be notified?
It's a requirement from the state. I think we did another one two years ago, right after I got on the board that summer, we had another one of these that we had to report. But I think it was, I don't know if it was TTHMs, I thought it was something different, but...
Terrible. Then I-
Yeah, it's a bit, you're right.
Then I would like to see whatever communication goes out that is not simply some bureaucratic, you know, stuff that people don't understand, that it's clear what the implications are or are not. Because in the past, when notifications have gone out about a water situation like that, you read it, and it's like, you don't even understand necessarily what it means and what it means for you and your family. So something written in plain English, I think, would be good.
You have, you have the communication sent to you by email tonight. Part of it, though, is determined by the Commonwealth. They tell you some of the things that you have to say.
I'm sure they do.
Notification, then you have to fill in around it. So, but it should be in your inboxes right now.
So I say it, and it has already happened. Thank you.
Your body happens, correct.
Thank you.
Jim, you're magical, just like that.
That's my talented and capable staff. That's not me. I take no credit for that.
Great. And how will, and how will that notice be distributed? I'm sorry, did you say that? I missed that.
It'll be by mail.
Okay. All right, great. And I assume you have more, oh, yes, Mr. Vignani?
Hey, Mark, you said it can be 80. What is, what does it typically run in the town? Around?
It changes. It's higher levels in the summer, but it's a rolling average also. So we take-
So 80 compared to 88 per parts per, did you say million or billion?
Billion.
Billion. So that doesn't seem like a lot to me. So, yeah, I need, but to Karen's point, is it a lot? Is it, you know, is it, is it a dangerous level, or is it really just, hey, we went over?
It's a very minimal level, and the other three samples during the year are much lower. This, this is the highest level out of the year in the summer that we see.
And when do we test it again?
If you are constantly over 80, Tony, all the time, then that would be a problem. But having one report over 80, as Mark said, is a blip. And the next week, next testing, Mark?
Oh, it'll be in November.
Oh, they don't make us do it more frequently when you exceed the limit?
No.
Well-
It's the average of all four quarters.
Okay. And our reading was 88, or our average is now 88?
Our average is 88.
For that one particular reporting site?
So our reading was much more than 88? Well, if it brought the whole average up to 88? What was the reading?
I believe it was 120. But it's calculated as an average over the four quarters.
How expensive is it? I'm sorry, I didn't-
Go ahead.
I'm done, Andrew, go ahead.
So how expensive is it to do a test? I mean, it will maybe require to do it in November, but is there any, I mean, I, I am not an engineer. I don't know, but it would seem to make some sense to, to test it again before then, even if we're not required to do so.
In the third quarter in the summer, they commonly see the high results, and so they're expecting it. And that's why they do the average over the four samples.
And each particular thing that we test for has a schedule determined by the state. And then there are certain readings that if they're exceeded, then they will make you test more often. But where this is a, you know, contaminant that is not a great concern when you test once over it, it's not something that you would then need to test for on a more, more regular basis, particularly because in situ, when the reservoir gets low, we see this reading.
Well, I guess, I'll ask the question again. How much is it to do the test?
Any idea, Mark?
I don't know offhand.
I, I can't be that much. We send water samples for testing on a weekly basis. I could find out, but it can't be that much.
No.
So would we get in trouble by the state if we tested it prior to November, where they say, oh, you're not supposed to do that?
Yeah, they don't like to see conflicting test results. Because now they want to add it into their, what their total is.
You're averaging.
They, they don't ask for that.
So they don't ask for it?
Right.
So I guess I'm asking you to-
They're, they're asking you to-
You don't think we need to test it again?
They're asking you to take steps to keep it from happening again. We're going to put mixers into storage tanks. That will help, reducing the chlorine level, and then flushing. We'll all take steps to lower the next test results.
Mark, I guess in those questions, what would happen if you decided to do an additional test?
I'm not sure. We haven't done that before. But I know they don't, they don't like to see us testing right away again, because they just want to see the results after we take the steps to reduce it.
Yeah, I mean, to test this soon after, it may not have the positive results yet.
Right.
You said it was on August 5th, right? That was already six weeks ago?
But if, but if we were going to, you know, take an interim test that do, is, are we required to report it to the DEB? Just, we wanted to know locally if we had been successful and not wait till November? I think that's a-
You'd have to report it to the DEB.
You would have to report it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you taken the steps yet to help reverse it, or are you just starting those now?
Well, we're just starting those now. We also have a consulting engineer that's going to assist us.
Does the board have further questions about the violation? Does Mr., Mark have more comments about the water update? Mr. Cloud, sorry.
The rest of the update. We're still in a Level 2 drought. 17A is, construction is moving along quickly. We are getting about 300,000 gallons a day from that plant to help hold the reservoir level. The reservoir level down is down 61 inches or 37.5% full. The average weekly use was 700,000 gallons from last week. That's slightly higher than the previous week, probably due to the holiday weekend.
But that's just from the plant, right? What's the total usage?
It don't have a total usage.
It's closer to 2 million, right?
Yeah, probably a little, little less than that altogether. We started treating for manganese removal with potassium per manganese. And it's looking like it's promising. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Mara?
Mark, do you have any data in comparison? I, I want to, our last big drought was 2017? Excuse me?
Was it, I thought it was 16, wasn't it?
Was it 16? All right, I always, do we have any comparative data as to where we are today, and where we were then in 2016 in the summer?
We do. I don't have it right in front of me now.
Okay. I'd love to see that. So I don't know if Sean can send it along at some point. I'd like to have an understanding, because that was a really bad summer as well. So I, I would just like to have a point of reference, I think, to see where we're at.
Just as, just as informative, Mara, when I met with them probably three weeks ago, we were nowhere near that level. So that drought was much worse than this one.
Than this one? Okay.
Yeah, significantly worse.
Yeah. And we've hit Labor Day, so this is usually the turning point.
Okay, thank you.
I think to Mara's point, though, it's, this year's compounded with a high use, much higher use because of the pandemic, I would assume.
Well, we started seeing the high use earlier, I think, this year was the big thing. The numbers started going up April, May, and June. We don't see them until the 4th of July, but we started seeing extra use or higher use in those early months. And we think that is definitely due to the pandemic and people being home. We think we saw people coming down to their summer homes early because they were working from home. So we did see those numbers going up. But we're at 37.5%, I think today was the number I got, Mark, which is significantly ahead of where it was in 16. Like in 16, we were down to the teens at one point, where we should be at this point, if not recovering now, shortly starting to recover, that reservoir number as, as usage drops, and we start getting some fall rains. We can get those to you, Mara, those are easy to get.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for that update. Does anyone have any further questions about the water update? I, before I open it to the public, I just wanted to, I, I happened to get my water bill today, and it shows you the lovely bar chart about water usage. And this year, I did not turn, I have an irrigation system. I know, I'll never use it again, Mark. But I, I did use it last year because we had a lot of water. And I am at literally more than half my usage for the last quarter than what I was last year. So if you're using your irrigation systems, please turn them off, because that is a huge drain on, on our, our water system. And as Jim pointed out, we'd rather drink it than put on our grass.
And I need to congratulate Mark and his crew. He's done a fantastic job. Those guys have been out looking, getting people to turn their, their irrigation off. But Mark, since we hired him, Mark is the guy who oversaw the flushing of the entire system. Last year, he was the guy out there doing all the flushing and looking at the system. So they've really done a good job and worked really hard to get some better results for us this year. So we need to thank Mark and his guys for that, because they do a good job.
They do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I, I do see some people that might want to comment on the water update. Are there any, I'll open it to the public. Freya's clapping, thank you, Freya. Becky, did you want to add anything? Becky is the Chair of our Water Resources.
Jennifer has a hand up.
Why do I not see that?
It's in the upper left corner. You can only see it with a full view.
Okay. Hold on, connecting, maybe because she was on my screen. Jennifer Kuhn? I don't see a hand up. Jennifer, did you want to make a comment? Why are you on here twice? Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. Jennifer, can you, are you? Hello?
She is calling multiple times, so it could be-
Jennifer, I see you on your San Francisco. I'm trying to unmute you. Did you have, you have your hand raised? You're now unmuted.
Okay, it works?
Yep. Oh, you're echoing. Turn off the, whatever other device you have, I would ask you to, to turn that off because you're getting the feedback.
Okay. I'm wondering, Karen, so your, your water usage went down, but did your bill, the actual amount, go up?
Oh, that's a very good question. I try not to look at those until Bill Day. I don't think, you know what, actually, our bills, I don't, it just tells you the current. It doesn't tell you what you paid last year. I would have to actually pull that out and-
Yeah, because I was quite excited, because my usage went way down, but my bill actually went up, so.
Well, we'll actually be discussing that shortly, Jen, because, and we'll get into the details of the water rates in, in the next agenda item. So we'll get to that next.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to, oh, Freya's waving her hand. Thank you for that. Freya, would you mind sharing your address and your name again?
Yes, my name is Freya Schlegel. It's 9 Westgate Lane. And my question was for this TTHMs. This test is six weeks old. Is it just coming back from the state to situate now, which is why you're now required to share that information, or is it something that you've known about, but now you just have to legally disclose? Because my understanding is these chemicals are being added to the reservoir to make sure the manganese is not in our water, which I had a cup to show you guys earlier, but my family kicked me out from being downstairs listening to all you. So, so that's my question. We're using the extra chemicals, which I'm assuming has spiked these numbers.
I don't want to jump on Mark, but I don't believe it's related to that at all. This is previous to those chemicals going in. This is related to the chlorine interacting with organics in the water. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
And when the reservoir gets low and the temperature goes up in that reservoir, we get more organics, algae and stuff like that in the water that interact with the chlorine that causes these TTHMs. So it's not actually related to the manganese chemical at all. And then when you get this, you go back and forth with the state about what needs to be reported, what needs to be reported, working on the release, and then you send the update out. And we wait until we have a board meeting now. We did it last time. We announced it at a board meeting first, so people don't just get this letter in the mail saying, oh my God, what the heck's going on?
But it's delayed, it's, it's always delayed, like, a solid six weeks to a month. I mean, because I feel like, I remember last time we got this notification. It was in the, the newspaper, and everyone was up in arms because the state had reported that our water was, you know, not safe to drink, but it was two months in the past.
Again, it's not that it's not safe to drink. That's not what we're reporting here. If there was an issue that was of life and safety, you have 24 hours to notify. So if there was a fecal chloroform count or one of those really, really bad things, you would get a notice within 24 hours of that, of that test result. So you see those when you see boil water orders around on, on the news that a town has a boil water order. That's because they got a hit, and that's a 24-hour turnaround. Something like this, again, you do the testing, you speak with the state about what it means, what it talks about. But if it had been something that was life and safety, it would have been notified right away.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. I see Jen Kuhn's hand up again. I don't, Jen, is that from before, or do you have another comment?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, okay, we're going to lower your hand. Great. That, I, if anyone else doesn't have any comments, that would conclude our water update, and we'll move on to the next issue, which is to discuss water sewer transfer station rates. And there's a lot of paper involved in this. So I think, Nancy, are you taking the lead on this?
I am, and I'm going to try to share my screen. So you're either going to see a PowerPoint presentation or a great link. I apologize.
Excellent.
Oh, I have an option, so I'm going to go right for the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so here we go.
Oh, great. No cats.
She's adorable anyways. I also can't see my other screen. So we wanted to give the board an update on the rates for fiscal '21 and do so that the board had enough meetings before the second quarter bills. So that would, yeah, so if the board could take a vote before the end of October on rates, that would be helpful, and then it would affect second quarter going forward. And I do apologize that my eyes seem to be looking in different directions. It's because I have three different screens going right now, and I apologize for that. We want to start with the transfer station rates, if that's all right with everybody?
Please. Please.
Bear with me. Here we go. And did we go to a new slide on everyone else's screen?
It says rate discussion framework.
Just making sure we're all on the same page. There is several different factors that drive rate increases for the transfer stations. It's an increase in operational costs, the hauling costs we've talked about before, and the need for equipment. In sewer and water, it's debt service that is driving those discussions about rate changes. There are significant capital projects in the queue for both water and sewer, which you are well aware from the five-year capital plan. What we try to do is focus on, in on what is known and have, see how that impacts our current rate structure. And the capital planning process from fiscal '22 to '26 should be beginning shortly. So you can all look forward to that and those updates. For the transfer station enterprise, as we talked about last year, there is a decrease in the recyclable revenues. There is also a corresponding increase for the disposable recyclables, construction debris and white goods and household trash. Or in the second year, the third year contract for construction debris, which was good, we're locked in at about 110 per tonne rate. But we do have an issue with a need for investment in equipment. As you may recall, from the June annual town meeting, we removed the yard jockey capital project from the capital plan because there were insufficient, or I felt there were insufficient transfer station revenues to support it. That will be coming back potentially at this November special town meeting because as soon as we took it off the plan, the piston failed. So it has been repaired, but it is literally on its last legs. And we need to address it, which may mean that we may need to address it not as an outright purchase, but rather through financing. Meaning we have to issue debt. Currently, the transfer station is debt-free. Made off its last piece of debt in fiscal '20. The enterprise fund was, the transfer station enterprise fund was the only enterprise fund that did not meet its revenue projections for fiscal '20. And most of that was due to enforcement. We can see that, especially with the stickers. And I gave you just a look at where the, where it was lagging. We weren't enforcing stickers at the transfer station during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we were just being waved in because it was very difficult for people to get their stickers online. That did change as we realized, oh, the effect it was having on our revenue stream. So we can see that there is a large shift between fiscal '20 and fiscal '21 for things such as the stickers. So that is the main reason why it was not meeting its revenue projections. We do expect it to meet its revenue projections this year. As I said, there was about, last July and August of '19 was $18,000. This year it's $42,000. Even though we increased the sticker by $10 per sticker, that does not account for this increase. It's all the shift of when the stickers were actually sold. And they started strong enforcement in June. The revenue budget is $13,000 more than fiscal '20 actual receipts year-to-date, which is good. Our CND tonnage demonstrates resiliency, which we'll show in the next slide. There was some concern last year when we changed our rate for CND that that wouldn't be the case. As you said, it doesn't have any, the enterprise fund doesn't have any outstanding debt. We need to look at how we're going to replace the equipment, the yard jockey and the backhoe specifically, which could be upwards, up to about $300,000. And the only other thing of note is there is an unpaid bill for this enterprise fund of $33,000 that will be at the special town meeting to be paid. And that was due to the vendor running our bag order in fiscal '20, even though we canceled the order and told them we did not have budget funds for it. They did it anyways. So they created an unpaid bill and they have been informed that they will not be paid until special town meeting can opine on it. This is the lovely chart that I like, that I don't think anyone else likes, but it does show the resiliency of the tonnage. So you can see on 2020, that was where we had, the second time we raised the rates on CND. And other than August, which was a little off, and I think it's just because people got tired of cleaning, our tonnage has been very consistent. And the yellow highlighted block for anyone who's interested is, gets highlighted because of Storm Riley. So that, there, those were significantly different and they were because of the debris that was being disposed of at the transfer station. These are our local communities, what they're charging for solid waste fees. Surprisingly, we did find that several local communities raised their CND rates after we raised ours. So even though we were trending higher, now we look pretty good compared to some of the others. Duxbury went up $100 and Cohasset up to $400. It was just interesting to see that those rates changed and there were some other changes mixed in. At this time, there is no rate adjustment recommended. We're just going to increase enforcement of CND and stickers and see if that solves the timing issue that we had for those revenues. And then we'll have to look at the financing of the needed equipment and renewal of the CND disposal contract in one year, in which case we may have to factor that into our rate discussion next year and may have to do something about that. If the CND contract is competitive, then it may not be an issue either. So the good news is for transfer station, we're saying leave it as is. That's the recommendation and then we can talk about it again in fiscal '22.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we pause on the transfer station and take each of these topics separately? If that's okay with the board, I think, especially since this one is not requiring a increase. Does anyone have an objection to that? Nope, okay. Does anyone have any questions about the transfer station prices and this data? Everyone's shaking their heads? Thank you.
I just have one question. Ms., Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Curran. Nancy or Jim, have we seen any reduction in household trash going into public receptacles? Because I know that was an issue in the first half, you know, when the COVID started.
Sean, McCarthy might be able to answer that. Sean, do you have a?
Oh, Sean, you're muted. Hold on. There you go.
Sorry about that. I haven't, in fact, when I talked to the guys the other day, even collecting the cans around town, they haven't seen a major drop off yet. I know just this last weekend was Labor Day, so maybe it hasn't happened yet. I have not heard whether the household trash was making an appearance. It's certainly something I can reach out to them and find out.
Yeah, do you mind just?
Not at all.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Any other comments, questions from the board on this, Andrew?
So Nancy, could you explain that 30,000 issue again? So we stopped the contract, but they still produce these bags, but we're still paying them? But what happened?
So these are the, these are the pay-as-you-throw bags. So what they normally do is they send an email and say, you know, your supply is running low. So we don't sell to the stores. We contract with a company that sells to us and sells to the stores and then handles all the collection activity for it. They're through a state contract called Waste Zero. And what they did was they sent an email back in May and said, you know, this is what we think you need to order. And we responded back, we can't afford that order. We'll place a much smaller order and then order a larger one in July. For their convenience, they ran it all at once and then sent us a bill, which I can't pay.
Okay, so we still, okay, we still got the, okay. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions about the transfer station? Okay. Does anyone listening in have a burning question about the transfer station recommendation? I don't see anybody's hands. I don't see anyone jumping up and down. Then I'll entertain a motion for the transfer station? Somebody, anybody? Or do you want to wait?
Got to find it.
Oh, wait, were I, are you on muted? All right.
Why are we making a motion to do nothing?
Do we need to make a positive affirmation of no change? That's a good question.
Yes, you should.
Okay. I guess we need to make a positive affirmation of no change, Mr. Vignani. Would you care to make that motion?
I've got it here.
Okay.
Moves that the board elect and vote to take no action on the transfer station enterprise fund rates at this time.
Move by Ms. Connolly. Is there a second? Second. Ms. Curran seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote is required to do nothing. Lauren, are you there?
Yes, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
And Ms. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to discussion of both the transfer, I'm sorry, the water and the sewer. And why don't we do those together?
So as previously mentioned, the sewer enterprise rate discussion is being driven by debt service. Several things that I'm recommending that be included in the rate at this time. As you may recall from a vote you took last meeting awarding a $1.2 million septicage, septicage upgrades contract. There are several pieces of authorized debt that funded that. That's before you later on in your agenda to authorize the inter-fund borrowing to finish that contract. And these are the specific projects, the top two, the $226, $406, and then the $920 for the copper reduction. Those two all support that $1.2 million project. These were all authorizations that were previously made for this work, but just have never been borrowed because we hadn't awarded a contract. The other one is one that we're well aware of, which is the Cedar Point. This is the 2.5 million that was authorized back in 2017 or 2018 now. This is the part that has not yet been borrowed, which is needed in order to execute the contract, which has been awarded for that project. This would be used in conjunction with the $2.2 million grant. And then I am not recommending at this time that there be any borrowing considered for the betterment portion until we get farther into the project because we need to go through the 2.2 million and the 2.3 million. The enterprise fund did meet its revenue projections for fiscal '20. So I just wanted you to see that. The big driver for that were the connection fees. So we've talked before about some of these one-time fees that come in that we can't rely on from year to year. So we had only put in a reasonable amount for the connection fees, $190,000, and we took in $680,000. So when you see these great results, I just don't want you to think that this is something that will happen year over year, year over year. These are basically one-time revenues and most of this is driven by toll brothers. Retiring debt, we've talked about that before. We have opportunities in sewer enterprise. The retiring debt provides for some of these other projects to move forward with less impacted future rates, including the upgrades to the plant as well as the INI project. So that would be the three we just talked about. The septicage receiving upgrades project in Cedar Point should also assist in keeping ratio budget costs. So we always have this discussion about where we can make expense reductions. And this project specifically should help in the future with expense reductions because we'll be treating less effluents, as the town administrator mentioned, 40,000 gallons a day less from Cedar Point. That means less seawater that we have to treat. So that's less electricity and less chemicals. Will we see it in fiscal '21? No. Will we see it in fiscal '22? I don't think so, possibly. But we should see it after that. And Will will correct me if he thinks I am mistaken in that. Sewer enterprise fund is now self-supporting due to the rate change of eliminating the remainder of the free usage from last year's, which means that it is supporting itself on its recurring revenues and not relying on retained earnings or other one-time revenues, which is a wonderful thing. We did want to talk to you about the sewer debt service. As you can see, the pale blue line is the existing debt service that we're paying down right now. And as you can see, that's rapidly amortizing, meaning it's being paid off at a fairly rapid motion, which is creating these openings for us to do these other projects without impacting rates. And that's what you're seeing with the Goldenrod line. That's the debt that we just talked about, those three major projects, three major borrowings that are really filling in. So we only need to make up the amount that's coming over the line. We did, I did talk to Will about the INI projects that are coming up. And they have a major, one that should be coming up on the plan for the lining of pipes. And that's what that red arrow is depicting, that we will have sufficient borrowing availability, that we can issue those types of projects and not impact the rates for the debt service. So that's just what I wanted to show you on that slide. That slide, you'll notice, is going to be dramatically different from the water enterprise slide when we get to it. So the Cedar Point project's estimated debt, just as the town's portion, that 2.3 lets left of the 2.5, is $174,000, which can be partially offset by the debt retirements. The net additional debt service impact is $98,567. So all of the septicage upgrades, the other ones we talked about, are being handled within the debt retirements. A 1% rate increase is equivalent to approximately $16,000. So at this time, the recommendation for the board to consider would be a 6% increase, which would generate approximately $96,163 to resolve that delta. A review of what we've done in the sewer rate increases over the last 10 years is before you on this slide. So we did in '17 reduce the free usage by 5%. In fiscal '19, we increased it by 5% for the base and usage rates and raised the connection fee to $16,000. And then last year, we eliminated the free usage from the base rate. So the recommendation to the board is to increase the sewer rate by 6%. So the usage would go from $494 per cubic feet, cubic foot to $524. And the base rate would be increased 6% from $61.69 to $65.40. This will address the sewer point project debt, the town's portion. It will also address the septicage plant upgrades, which will, are mostly offset by the retirement of future debt, if not, excuse me, they're completely offset by the retirement of future debt. And that would be the only other capital item for sewer enterprise that is authorized, but not yet issued as the $400,000 for future design and engineering of the next phase of the expansion, which was approved in 2014. So that means there's only one borrowing authorization still left on the books after all of these items. So the, also, this is a comparison of the annual sewer bill for local municipalities. So Cohasset is still number one, with Marshfield being number two, Kingston number three, Situate is number four. If we were to look at increasing the rates to 6%, that would bring us up to number three. And Kingston would go to number four, and then HAM is five and Rockland is six. The other towns don't have sewer service. So Madam Chair, if you want to discuss sewer?
I do say, sorry, I was reading your chart. Thank you for all this data. I just, I just want to, before we launch into this, just thank Will and Nancy. You know, we were at a deficit a while ago and your recommendations and management has really rated the ship on this. So thanks on that. Do you happen to know what the hull, since we're having those lovely conversations, what the hull rates are? Sorry, it's not on this chart, but.
No, I do not, but I can certainly get that information for you.
That would be interesting to know in the, in the next conversation on Morris. But, okay. Does the board have questions before we go on to water?
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Connolly?
On the sewer enterprise update, the description of the revenues, I'm curious. When it says there was $120,476 transferred from the general fund, is that the general fund of the town?
Yes, the sewer enterprise has, the wastewater treatment plant had a debt exclusion vote many years ago for improvements to that facility. And fiscal '21 is actually, I believe, the last year of that, it's about $93,000. And then that goes away. That's one of the debt exclusions.
And that was before there was an enterprise fund or?
No, it was after the enterprise fund. My guess from a financial point is that the cost at the time was too expensive for just the sewer users to support.
Okay. Because generally, we don't consider an enterprise fund as being self-supporting if money is being transferred from the general fund.
Right. In this case, it was a debt exclusion vote.
Okay, all right, that's my question. Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions from the board? I muted you second, for a second, Tony, because you were talking. Just a couple of questions. I assume that the earnings on investments over budget, is that because the, in, the income from the connection fees was so high?
Yeah, and we also project that very low in case, since interest rates can be very volatile, as we can tell this year.
Yeah.
You never know when something's going to happen and the interest rates plummet. So we tend to be extremely conservative with investment income.
Okay, great. And then I don't know if you'll know this answer, if somebody else can help, but do we know? I mean, you said that the connection fees are so high because of toll. Are they ahead of schedule from what we anticipated their sales? Or were we just super conservative not knowing?
No, I believe they are ahead of schedule at this point.
Wow, okay. And then the last question. And then the last question I had on sewer was, in the backup, there's a discussion of the expansion plan. Do we have timing on that? Is Will still on here? No?
I'm here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't remember where I read that. Nancy, where did you talk about?
It's, that's the one piece of the debt that we're not issuing, which is the $400,000 for future design, because we haven't had the capacity to do that.
Okay, yeah, that's exactly where I had the question about timing. Will, do you have any illumination on that, or is that, we're going to figure out as we down the road?
That hopefully, we should have a presentation in the spring, which should outline the timeline for both remediating all of our INI issues to free up capacity for North Situate or another phase of expansion, and the general plan for the expansion.
Great. Great, thanks. Anyone else have a question on sewer? I think we need to have the water discussion before we have any vote on either of the rates. Anybody in the, let me look in the public, anybody listening in wish to speak about sewer rates at this point? I'm not seeing any hands. Not seeing, okay. So Nancy, would you like to go on to the water rates?
So as it's been for several years, the driving force behind the water rate increases is the debt service related to the improvements to infrastructure. Every 1% increase to the raise is approximately $48,000 in additional revenue. The town meeting authorized projects that were not factored in the last rate review included the $4 million for design and engineering of a water treatment plant and SCADA upgrades, $800,000 for design and engineering of Homerock water mains, $3 million for water main replacement, which was the November 2019 special town meeting vote, and then an additional $2 million, which was at the June 2020 town meeting vote, and then $350,000 for the permanent residuals at treatment at well 18. The enterprise fund did meet its revenue projections for fiscal '20. One of the factors on this enterprise fund was the FEMA reimbursement for Storm Riley. So there was an extremely large bill that the town had to pay to the town of Marshfield, because we had a water main that was ruptured, and we had to pay $85,000 in additional water usage. We did file an abatement with the town of Marshfield, who has yet to take any action on it, but we also filed with FEMA and reimbursed 75% of that. So that's that $63,000 you see. So that's driving part of why, part of the revenue surplus for the year. We talked about the Water Enterprise debt service. This line right here, this is fiscal '21, this blue, this blue actually extends over because of the way the debt is structured. This existing long-term debt also includes short-term debt. So we're making paydowns on large bond anticipation notes that we have outstanding. So this blue really actually goes across in this, in the Goldenrod. I know it's confusing, but it was the only way I could show it. But what I want you to see is that it doesn't really retire. Where we saw on the sewer, that nice downward decline with the rapidly amortizing debt, we have a lot of infrastructure improvements over a short amount of time, and they are just plateauing. So this debt is 20, 25 years in duration. So it's not going anywhere, it's not going anywhere fast. And as we continue to make investments in our infrastructure, the debt service continues to increase. So the Goldenrod is the new debt that hasn't been issued, that is being reflected in this blue line over here. And the approved projects is the pale greens. And the pale green, basically, that is the residuals. That project hasn't been started yet. There's only, to just put numbers to that, there's only $68,000 in debt retiring for fiscal '22, and there's a million in new debt service coming onboard. The rates increased in fiscal '21 to account for the green sand filter and the emergency water treatment plant repairs. And the estimated net increase between those two is $537,298. So of the $1 million in new debt service, we've already accommodated 500, almost a half a million of it in previous rate increases. So we're not dealing with the whole amount. And we had that discussion last year, I think Selectman Cowan brought it up, when we were talking about maybe not raising the raise as much, but then having to deal with a larger rate increase this year. And the board decided to go with the recommendation last year of 15.2% because they knew they had these other projects that were also going to be coming due. A rate increase of 11% would generate approximately $532,000. So the wash, some of the rate considerations we want to have the board have before them, as we talked about last year, we were trying to bring those forward in the first presentation, are expenses. So the Marshfield water bill has been mitigated to some extent due to the installation of pressure-reducing valves. The fiscal '20 budget for that bill was $354,000, but the actual expense was only $266,000. So we have seen a marked reduction in the usage. The fiscal '21 budget was level funded for fiscal '20. This was a major driver for us in costs. Actually, you had to reflect it one year in a, because it had gone up so much. We do want to note that Marshfield has not yet set their fiscal '21 rates, so that could change depending on how they set their rates, if they change their rates. But it's possible that that budget line could be reduced by $50,000. At this time, I wouldn't recommend it until we know what they're going to do with their rates, but that is a potential expense savings that we have on the horizon. We could also delay borrowing the $2 million portion of the new water main projects and shift that off to a future year. That would save approximately 2.5% of that rate increase. The issue that the board would have to consider is that, when we're going to get into this in our next presentation about debt, is borrowing costs right now for us are historically low. So do we want to move part of this borrowing off to a future date and not know where our interest rate will be, or potentially pay more in interest because the rates have come back up? I don't have a crystal ball, you don't have a crystal ball. It just has to be something that the board has to consider. The project, the $3 million project is ready to go out to bid. They were considering doing the rest of the $2 million with it, doing as one large project, or at least putting it out to bid at similar times to see if potentially the same company might want to bid on both pieces of it. So I did discuss with the DPW director if they can do $5 million worth of work, and that is their plan to do it. Capital items that are authorized but not yet borrowed nor included in this rate presentation is the previously mentioned $350,000 for the permanent residuals, which would be approximately a 1% impact on rates. Just so you know what's looming in the future, the $800,000 for design and engineering of Homerock water mains, that project is on hold, but at that level, that would be about a 2.25% increase on rates. And then the balance of the design of the water treatment plant. So so far, I'm only building in a half a million dollars for the contract that we have outstanding. The other 3.5 million is not factored into the rates, and that's approximately a 4.5%. So just those three items alone are about another 8% that you're looking at when those go out. We also have $27 million in proposed projects on the fiscal '22 to '25 capital plan, not including water. So this are, this includes development of the Goldenwell Field, SCADA upgrades, a whole host of things, but it does not include that, and major renovations to the water treatment plant or a new water treatment plant. The rate increases over the past 10 years are, there's nothing to be said about them. And they're there because of the investment in the infrastructure. So the 19.2, the 19.5, and the 20% were all there for the $22 million replacement of the cast iron pipes. And then 15.2 was for the green sand filter and the emergency water treatment plant. The rate recommendation before the board for their consideration is that the water usage rate and base rate both be increased by 11%. The rate increase will address the continuing investment in the water system. And it is further recommended, and actually, I have two recommendations. I've got a second recommendation today. One, that the one-inch meter replacement cost be increased from $500 to $1,000. So last year, you increased the meter replacement for, just the meter replacement, from $250 to $500. What's come up are these one-inch meters. The one-inch meters cost almost $500. So at $500, we're, they were not even recovering the cost of installing them. So that was brought to my attention by the water department. So we're recommending for the one-inch meters that they be, that a replacement, the meter replacement rate, so that's a damage meter, would be a $1,000 cost, not the original meter, which comes with the connection fee. The second item that was raised to me today is we now have eight-inch base rates. So we have, have it on my wall, excuse me for getting up. Sad what I have on my wall. We have a 5/8 inch meter all the way up to a 6-inch meter, but we also have two connections right now in town that are 8-inch. We have a second 8-inch one. One of them is the condos down on Central Ave. And there is no rate for those. So currently, they're just charging them what a six-inch meter is charged, which doesn't seem fair to the people who are 6-inch meter people. There should be a different rate for the 8-inch meter people. So my recommendation for that, that it be set at 25% more than whatever the 6-inch meter is. So if the board votes a rate for the 6-inch, we'll just do 25% over that, whatever the board decides to do with the rates for fiscal '21, if the board so chooses to make that, to move forward with that recommendation as well. And I apologize that it's not on the screen for you. That was one this afternoon that came forward. And then a comparison of the water bills along in our surrounding towns. And again, I don't have hull on this, on this chart. I'm not really sure why I don't have hull. Maybe I just considered that MWRA, and since I had Cohasset and Hingham, I ignored them, or maybe they're just. But right now, Cohasset is number one, Hingham is number two, Situate is number three, even with the rate change, that would not change Situate's ranking, it would still be three. And then it goes down from there. As you can see, last year, there were a lot of communities that had not looked at their rates recently. And in the last year or so, several of them have looked at their rates and changed their rates. And at least one of them mentioned on their site that they did so because they were investing more in their infrastructure. So with that, I turn it back over to the board for further questions.
All right. Thank you, Nancy, as usual, very thorough. So we've got a proposal for sewer increase of 6% that would, and then for water, 11% plus adjustments to the meter replacement fees. Those two suggestions under Nancy's calculation would result in increasing the average water and sewer combined for a resident by 145 for a year, or $12 a month. You know, this is where we've been struggling for the last four or five years, is we heard loud and clear that we had to make improvements to our infrastructure, both from a resident complaint and from our professionals knowing it aging infrastructure. So now we're paying the piper, which we knew. So I will open up the discussion. I'm sure there are questions and comments from the board, so we'd like to start. Mr. Goodrich?
I guess my first question, since we have, so this is 11% in our tiered system of rates. This is just across the board for all those different rates. Do we have breakdowns on folks that are using on the higher levels, the plus, you know, 3,000 gallons? I forget off the top of my head the exact, how the tiers work out, but.
Let me try to, can you see that?
Oh, we did for a second.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to scroll down to the tiers.
Okay.
So it's 0 to 1,200, then 1,200 to 3,000, and then 3,000 plus?
So I guess my, well, I don't.
You can't see it, Nancy.
Yeah.
So are you still on the PowerPoint?
Yes, yep.
My ultimate question while, while you're doing that, is whether or not the super users, or those folks that are over 3,000, if how you affect those rates versus folks who are being good stewards and maybe are using less water, how that would play out on revenue? Does that make sense? Is that?
Yeah, it does. The rates now are, the over 3,000 is 11.20 per hundred. And it goes down to the first 1,200 is $1.60. That's the range.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? What's the top tier again?
Top tier is over 3,000 cubic feet, I guess that's what it is, is 11.20 over 100. $11.20 over 100.
So.
A water or a sewer? Oh, I'm sorry, water. That's water.
See, so like Pembroke, they charge $12.97 for over, like.
So.
I guess I'm just trying to, all right, here we go.
So you're looking down in this area. Sorry, my Zoom technical skills are under development. So there is a dramatic difference when you get over 3,000 gallons. You're certainly going to pay for it. The difference between, if you hear my adding machine, I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, like a 60% increase in the rate?
So we're doing, you're proposing a flat 11% increase regardless of the tier. Right, and Mr. Goodrich, are you saying we should think about maybe? I don't know what the impact would be. Are you thinking about that, maybe we should be more regressive? Is that progressive or progressive? I don't know.
Yes, more progressive. Right, so I mean, folks, so I look at other towns, right, so Pembroke, they charge $12.97 for over 50,000, which is way more, that's probably commercial. But like, right, so if they, if those users over 3,000, or if there's another tier, which we're not going to do, but right, if they were at 15%, but the people who are under 1,200, you know, they have no impact. I guess I'm trying to say, I don't know how many of our users are between each of these tiers. Does that make sense?
It does.
Good question.
And I believe this question came up, and we looked at it, and there there wasn't, it was a question of whether or not we would be hurting some of the commercials, but they're on their own rate, so I don't think that was the answer to the question. I think we found that there was necessarily a high component within the rate itself, but you could always add another tier. So you could add a fourth tier to really try to dissuade people from going there, but you also have to then look at how that affects your revenues.
Right, yeah, so, but also, I mean, the commercial, there's no tier, so we have no tiers for commercial?
No, the lot.
Oh, you can't do that, okay.
What? Excuse me. Doesn't Marshfield have both commercial and residential water rates?
Yes.
Do we have, isn't that the last line here, water usage commercial?
Yes, we have a commercial rate.
Yeah. It's the bottom line, yeah. And we're talking about increasing that by 11% as well? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So Andrew, it's hard to put that, because anyone that's in the third tier is in the first tier and the second tier and the third tier.
Yeah.
And the one thing that you don't want to do necessarily is entice people to go put wells on their property. So, you know, it's a balancing act. They're paying 10 times more than the lease users in the middle, you know, it's kind of the middle or in the middle, right, five times more, and then 10 times more if you get over that, that 3,000 number. I mean, you could consider hitting another tier. I just don't know how many people use, other than me, you know, 5,000 gallons or something, you know, that would be an interesting thing to look at.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, and that's a good data, maybe Sean or someone has it. I mean, is this, is this 5% of our users, is this 50%? I have no idea.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I agree, that would be really useful. I should have said at the outset that I don't, can't recall a year that we had this discussion where we didn't have to think about it for, and didn't vote on it the same night, because these are the kinds of questions that we'll follow up with. But Nancy, I think that would, that would be an interesting sensitivity analysis to say, you know, if. you know, if, if you were to, let's say, you wanted to, from a conservation standpoint, disquage people from using Tony Vignani levels of water, then, you know, maybe we don't do a flat 11%. Maybe it is, I don't, but I don't know what that impact is. Is there any way of knowing, doing that kind of sensitivity analysis?
Well, we can look at what type of data we can pull from the system. I don't know because I don't normally pull that type of data, the consumption data out of the, out of the system. And then analyze it, see what we can provide. The, the problem, not the problem, the, as you mentioned, the flip side with water conservation, as well as with rates at those really excessive rates at, at the highest levels, is you can change behavior, which is good from a water conservation aspect. It's bad from a revenue perspective. So you might need to change your rates even higher to compensate for the decline in usage in order to get the same amount of revenue. So it depends on what is more of a driving factor. Is it the revenue or is it the conservation of the water? And in some cases, it's a balancing act between the two. And I think that's where we, where we fall into that. But absolutely, and I didn't expect you to vote water or sewer rates today, tonight. It would have been a fun and exciting thing if it happened because then I wouldn't have PowerPoint design for the next one. But I expected there to be some questions from the board and that we would come back to you with the answers to those questions.
Okay, well, there's, there's one question. It's.
I think overall, with an 11% increase, that's the lowest that we've had in a while to be able to sustain, you know, the very aggressive water goals that we've put in place here. So I, I was, I was happy to see that that number was there. But it's, it's just going to get larger. We're just designing a facility that's going to have a much larger price tag to build. You know, I don't remember what the number was, 60,000 or 40, 60 million or 40 million to build the facility.
40 million.
Yeah, so, you know, the short term is going to have much more get along with it as well. But, you know, we've got to stay focused on keeping the water clean. And I think we've made great progress over the last decade, so. So I would, I'd like to look at some of those numbers too. But I also understand what Nancy's saying about both sides of the knife there.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Vignani, Mr. Goodrich. Is that a hand up?
I totally agree that we have to do these, obviously, we have to do these projects. You know, and I would even consider, one of the things that's not here that we've talked about a lot are, is some of the, the quote unquote, the brown water mitigation, because we haven't been able to find the money that if someone is getting brown water, they don't, shouldn't have to pay for it. So there's the question is, is there another tier for super users? Or are high end users that you could have, they could be a 12% and that 1% you could dedicate? So we can, you know, someone buys a filter, we can help. We can do some of those things that we've discussed in the past, but we haven't had money to do so. So we're encouraging, but also have revenue on a different, different way to kind of make sure that we're making that commitment. So when we raise rates, they don't also get a letter saying that there's an issue. And so those folks can have some sort of mitigation with it as well. But I, again, I, as you said, we have to stay committed to the, to these projects.
Nancy, did you want to add?
Yeah, I'm having a bad idea, but it's only bad for me. The, the financial management software we have is integrated. So the munis that I have for my general ledger is the same as we have for utility billing. And what we do is we have three databases, the live database and the test and train. I know this is more information than you want at 9:30, but bear with me. But it means I have two sandboxes to play in. So what I can do is I can run with the water department's help and a lot of chocolate. I'm thinking of running a scenario where we change the rates by 11% on the current rate structure and rerun the first three quarter bills for the A, B, and C, which are the three sections of town, and see what they would have been. And then do something like add a fourth tier for maybe 5,000 and above and make that 50% higher than everything else and run that. And then we'll be able to see all of the different bills and see the impacts and what it would do for revenue and if you're, who exactly is being affected by these increases.
I think that's a great idea. I hate to have you do that, but you did give us till October.
No, that's okay. And I know what the water department likes for chocolate, so.
I think it's a great suggestion. Okay. Andrew, are you done? I had a question if you're.
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no need to be sorry. I just didn't want to interrupt you. Nancy, when you're going through the rate consideration slides, you mentioned some of the projects totaled, you know, 8%. Is that additional 8% in a forthcoming, you know, rate discussion? Or is that eight part of the overall 11?
In addition to, in a future discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
No. No need to be sorry. It is what it is. That, that was my question. Okay. Other questions or comments on this?
Karen?
Yep, go ahead.
I guess my question is, who are the people, people, entities using that huge amount of water? Are they primarily businesses? Or are they, are the actual residents, people, using all that water?
Well, we know that there's been some fines. Jim, you could probably answer this better, but some of the, the most egregious fines are people that just keep watering their lawn every day.
We have one residence that's up over $3,000 in fines. He just keeps watering it, we just keep finding him.
Has he paid the fines?
As I know.
Well, so.
He gets leaned on his taxes if he doesn't pay them.
Right. Well, I, I guess what that is at least telling us is there's some point at which people simply don't care if they have a huge water bill because the green lawn means more to them. So I would be in favor of really hitting those guys. Just editorializing.
Had to close the, the office door here. Okay, so it, we've had a lot of comments. Did somebody, did the board have any other questions, comments on this? Want to just make sure that nobody waiting? Andrew, you have some more?
No, so actually, I love, so Tony's point about the, the private wells, and I'm sorry, I don't know this. So I asked, do we set a rate? Is there a, is there a permit cost that the town sets for a private well?
There is a permit cost. I don't know what it is. It's to the board of health and I'd have to look off the top of my head.
But we would be able to possibly increase that if we wanted to discourage. Right, that would be within purview. I'm just trying, if we're doing, trying to do both.
That's a good question. I think we need, that's a follow up question. We'll see in the mix. I don't like any of us now. That's a very good question.
I'll say.
Okay. Any objection to opening it up to see if anyone on call wants to? I see none. I'm looking through. All right, oh, yeah, okay, Miss Becky. Wait a minute, where'd you go? Everybody, the screen just changed. Now I've lost Becky. Where are you? Oh, there you are. Okay, you got your face in. That's great. All right, Becky, name and address. And Becky is the chair of our water resource. Are you still chair? Yep, our water resources committee. You're still muted. Oh, wait. Can I hear you? You're not muted, but we can hear you. Turn your volume up, maybe? Oh, there you go. I heard your voice. Okay, Becky.
Becky Mallett, 100 Pratt Road, Chair of the Water Resources Commission. So I was going to echo some of Andrew's sentiments, just in terms of looking at either adding another tier or adjusting the increase per tier. Nancy, I know you love chocolate and numbers, but I also wonder if now it might be a good time to have someone come in and do an official rate study. You know, consultants that specialize in this and look at conservation data as well as forward looking at your future projects. You know, I know over the last couple of years, we've been doing these kind of annual discussions about covering rate increases for debt and projects going on that year. But that number, I think it was $27 million of projects, 2022 to 2025. I don't know that, you know, is there something we can be doing this year to help start to raise some funds for those projects? And maybe to look at a more holistic, forward looking rate study in addition to looking at adjusting tiers might be useful. And then also, I was just looking at some of the high user data from last year. And there, there are, there are homes that use, you know, 100,000, 120,000 gallons. So it's, it's, there's a lot of room up above that 3,000 gallon limit. Those are my comments, really just kind of looking at funding future projects now and looking at how we might adjust the increases per tier.
Good question, Nancy. When was, I, I recall we did a rate study at one point. I just don't remember when it was.
It was two years ago with Time Bond.
That's right. It was a lot of paper, I remember. And that's how we looked at the, sort of trying to smooth out the increases was based on that analysis, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, and we looked at the sewer enterprise as well at that time.
Okay. And how long did you, does anyone recall how long? I mean, Becky, you've seen that study, right? You were.
How long, how, how far it looked? I know we're just kind of wrapping up the pipe replacement costs. So it was kind of looking at projects from there. I think a lot has come about since that study was completed. And I don't believe they looked at, I know it was suggested, but I don't believe that study looked at adjusting increases for different tiers or creating a new tier.
Okay. Why don't we start with pulling that out and see where it may be deficient before we rush off and do another whole study? Because I know that that's quite a process and probably won't be, even if we were to start today, wouldn't, wouldn't impact this decision because we'd have to wait for that analysis, I would think. Is that correct, water people?
Yes, and there's a cost associated with it as well.
Oh, yeah, it's a substantial cost, obviously. Okay.
I was just saying, update to what they did two years ago might be more palatable. I don't know for sure.
Okay, that's definitely a good thing to look at. Do you have further comments? We have another hand raised. Okay, then I'm going to go to Mr. Gates. If you would like to comment on the water and sewer rates, Mr. Gates, please give your name and address.
Peter Gates, 39% in Drive. Two quick questions or comments. One is Karen, I know you've mentioned that your water usage was much, I'm sorry, my video is not working. Is that okay?
Oh, that's fine. I just, seeing your face, Peter.
Thank you. Karen, you mentioned that your water usage the past, whatever billing cycle was significantly less than last year. So I wanted to comment that what I've noticed and I have contacted the water department on is that the billing cycles can really fluctuate in terms of number of days that your water usage is measured. Mine specifically, this past quarter was like 15 days fewer than last year's. So it's difficult to compare the usage or even over last quarters because the days are significantly different. So I thought it would be helpful to, on the bill, put a daily average so you could see how much you're using per day rather than over a quarter because it's not really comparing apples to apples. Just a comment.
Oh, that's good to know. It makes me sad about this, but.
Yeah. Yep, because you just see the bill, you're like, oh, I did better than last month. But you have to look at the number of days and it doesn't clearly, it does say the reading date and the prior reading date, but it doesn't say the number of days. You have to kind of figure that out. So I thought that would be helpful.
That's a really good point.
That'll be helpful, that'll be helpful for a conservation effort as well. And the second thing is, to Andrew's point, is it possible, and Nancy probably will not like this, but is it possible to change rates based upon the season? Could you have a higher rate for the summer, which is obviously when we have our biggest water issues? So I'll just throw out there, I think Andrew's on the right path here and maybe increasing the rates on the biggest offenders. But maybe you could even go further and look at potentially increasing rates in the summer. Just a thought. Thank you.
Does anybody have any insight on how that? But, or maybe we put that on the list of things to look into because that might take some research.
I just, Madam Chair, just a comment. It certainly, I haven't seen it, but I can look into it. I just don't know if that would be considered inequitable, where you have seasonal residents?
Yeah.
It would look like you were targeting them.
Yeah, I think we'd have to look into that.
But I'll certainly see if I can, I'll talk, reach out to Mike Schrader at Time Bond and ask him if he's seen it anywhere.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to opine on water and sewer rates? Or question? I don't see any more hands. So it looks like the topics we are going to review are the consumption levels at various level, at various levels and look at, do some sort of sensitivity and perhaps consider doing a higher tier. Then, once we have those numbers, we'll be able to look at, do we want to start creating some sort of mitigation fund? And how does that impact the rates? Well, cost installation for wells, look, figure that one out to see if that's something we need to look at. Review the old rate study and see if it does need to be updated or if it's useful to us as a tool continues to be useful. And then to look at different rates for the season. Is there anything else that we need to see before we take these things to a vote? Did I miss anything? Nancy? No? Okay. Then I would suggest that we table this conversation until we have that information and have that vote down the road. Sound good? Okay, everyone's nodding. Moving right along, we will go, oh, another small little topic. 8:55, we're not quite an hour behind. This is what I hope never would happen. But let's talk about, our 8:55 is a review of our town debt update. There are no votes on this. So Nancy, if you could run us through where we are on debt, which you've already alluded to quite a bit, but.
Madam Chair, if I could take you back to the 8:45, which we skipped over, which is a quick and easy.
Oh, I just, I crossed it off out of hopeful thinking. Thank you for joining us. We have one vote on the interfund borrowing for sewer projects.
And we just covered that as part of the sewer presentation. You awarded, the board awarded a contract for the septic receiving upgrades of 1.2 million. And this is just the interfund borrowing for the projects that had a borrowing contribution to that. Pam sent you an email about it. It's the copper limit reduction phase two, copper reduction in the wastewater treatment system and the belt, press rehabilitation and grit sludge dewatering system. It's $846,406. The available capacity right now for borrowing is 4.5 million, which is the amount of the stabilization fund balance. So I would just ask if the board would approve this until we issue a bond in the next, in the coming months to replace these funds.
Okay, we, we still have our sewer commissioner online. Does the board have any questions about this request?
Nope.
No one does? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the board to selectmen approve the interfund borrowing prepared by the treasurer collector in the amount of $846,406 for the purpose of copper limited reduction phase two, copper reduction in the wastewater treatment system and for the belt filter press rehabilitation and grit sludge dewatering system at the wastewater treatment facility.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second.
Second.
Ms. Curran, any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Danfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion, that motion passes 5-0. Now we'll move on to the situate debt update. Nancy, hold our town finance director.
So I know the board members and Jim love debt discussions as much as I do. And seeing that is quarter of 10, let me just give you the highlights. We have outstanding debt. Down, it was 100 and almost $3 million last year. It's down to about $95 million this year. I wanted to give this update to the board was because we are looking at, we're talking about, we have, excuse me, let's back this up. We have two bond anticipation notes banned. We have two bond anticipation notes banned that are appearing in December. So this is when we were planning to go out and issue a bond to replace these bond anticipation notes because we've been rolling them for several years and we haven't been to market for a bond since 2019. I think it was February of 19. We've talked to our financial advisor, Pam and I did. And what their recommendation to us is, is to go to market as soon as we can possibly get ourselves to market because the rates are at historic lows. And we can go to market within 90 days in, before the maturation of our debt, which is in December. We can go to market now. The earliest we can get there would be October with going through the rating agencies and the like. So that's why I wanted to give you this presentation, also because I wasn't sure if the board had full awareness of just how large the bond potentially could be and what would be in it. So let me just move off the presentation because I know you all are just waiting with bated breath to go to that presentation. And I want to go to instead, this other presentation. No, I'll try it. It's these multiple presentations, we've almost got the cat going now. So I know this is busy and it's in your packet, but for those at home, what you want to look at is the second to last column. The size of the bond that we are potentially looking at is over $30 million. So we have that much debt in different projects that is at the point where it's ready to be issued and go to market. We're currently holding about $21 million on bond anticipation notes. So that is why I wanted to have this presentation before the board, to see if there was anything in here the board didn't want to see in a bond and wanted to continue to roll notes or it wanted to change anything specifically. After this particular bond issue, which would likely come before the board at its second meeting in October, if it were to go forward as planned, we would have very little authorized and unissued debt left over. So things that wouldn't be included would be the high school locker rooms in the Wapatac Portico, which were just approved at the June annual town meeting. But what, things that would be included would be the FEMA four shore design, which has been rolling on notes, the towns portion of the high school fields complex, four shore protection, which is the town's share of the EG Beach firm. And one of the ones I want to call your attention to is the senior center. This would be 10 million of the $12 million for that project. I would not recommend borrowing the full amount. We don't know what the final cost is going to be. There is one more grant that we are going to go after for this. And we still don't know what, if any, private donations will be coming forward. So I would not want to go for the full amount of that. And the Hummer Rock Fire Station, at this time, we have to decide whether or not to go for that. $260,000, which is sitting out there, that's the only portion of that project, which is not cash. Excuse me for moving that kind of quickly. The CPC portion, so the community preservation portion of the high school fields, CPC will vote at their September meeting how they want to proceed with that, since they're the ones who'll be paying the debt service. My recommendation to them is to do a five-year bond and pay it off because the rates are so low. And that was the recommendation from our financial advisor as well, that they not roll notes, which is one of the things we were looking at for them, that they could roll notes from year to year. And then when years they didn't have projects, they could pay down more on their debt. In this case, they would be locked in to pay it off, but it would be over a shorter time period. Like I said, they're going to discuss it and decide what they want to do at their meeting. So either roll notes, go for five years, go for 10 years or go for some other period. As we talked before during sewer rate discussion, four out of five of the pieces of outstanding sewer debt would be issued, not the Betterment portion of the sewer debt. And then on the water pipe, the last piece of the 22 million, which we've been rolling on notes, as you can see from the small print, we're actually making large pay downs on this every year while it's been in a note. Several of the water treatment items would be in there, including the emergency water treatment plant repairs. It's already in the rates. We're already paying pay downs on this principal, which is having put it out in for long term. We talked about whether we would put both pieces of the water mains out there and then the pieces of the waterways. The only other one that the board would, I would just like to get the temperature of the board is the Widow's Walk Clubhouse renovation. We had talked again on this one of rolling notes so that we could pay down more if we had more retained earnings. In this case, we would lock it in at a 10-year rate because the rates are so low. And then if we had extra in a given year, just bank it into either retained, bank it into their capital stabilization button to build up their reserves. And then we'd have a known for the debt going forward. So those are, that was just why I wanted to bring a debt presentation before the board and just to have, see if the board has any feelings about any of the things that I just went through very quickly and I apologize.
That's a lot of great data. Does anyone want to start with questions?
Is there any way to add some of our existing that's already bonded?
We can't prepay anything, but we could potentially refund the May 2011 issue. We have one thing that's holding that up, which is there's a piece of it that hasn't been expended. It's water main related. So I'm working with Kevin to see if there's any retainers that we have to pay or anything like that, that we could get that paid. So we could do a refund. We have a 2011 bond, which they recommend that we refund. And we also have a 2012. We can no longer refund it in advance. We used to be able to advance refundings. So that one would have to wait another year.
Can we do, can we do any of the big debt, like the school and all that sort of stuff? We can't refinance those?
Not yet. That can't be called for 10 years and it's only in the fifth or sixth year right now.
Okay. That's my other question.
Another, any other board members?
Yeah, I, a question. I'm noticing that there are some terms of 20 years down to five. With rates being historically low right now, is there a reason why you wouldn't push everything out as far as you can in terms of paying interest rates that are so low now for a longer period of time?
The term is controlled by the useful life of the asset which you're financing. So it says, like, equipment, which we try not to borrow for at all, that would be your term. But when we looked at the sewer enterprise, that rapidly amortizing debt, we want to keep that downward trend as steep as we can so that we have flexibility to issue other pieces within there and have that from year to year. So we try to rapidly amortize our debt, which means try to keep it to 10 years if we can.
Okay. Nancy, am I reading this right? On the current and projected debt exclusions impact on the average home? That in fiscal '21, it's actually projected to be slightly lower. But then we would jump, I can't, like, maybe $100 of, is that?
Yeah. Yep, you are. Hold on, let me just go to that.
Sorry. That's for the board, that's page 86 of our backup. And that increases is the senior center and the veterans, Jim?
There it is.
So the question is, so if we go, do those projections reflect proposed bonding now?
They do.
Okay.
I've lost my debt presentation and I don't know where it went.
Sorry.
Yeah, and it's like, water rates just won't go away.
Aw, there's the cat.
That would be...
Only a matter of time.
Technology is wonderful.
You tried, Nancy, you tried.
I tried. Do you see a PowerPoint presentation now?
We do. Debt management.
Okay. Let me go to the debt exclusion slide. Because we all get seasick only as he does this. I do a lot. So the red would be the senior center. Yes, there is a decline. We talked about that during last year's debt presentation, that we had the option of issuing the senior center debt ahead of time to try to even this out in the fiscal '20 to '21. We could just let the taxpayer have a break. And the board voted, give the taxpayer a break. So that's why you're seeing a decline because as this is retiring, there's less and less of an impact because it doesn't backfill unless there's another vote. The good part of that is that this entire, as you see, the, had a 10 million bond, the senior center would have affected fiscal '22 on the tax bill materially. About $89, that's my estimate based on the current rates. But almost a third of that, it's only like a $50 field because a third of it is covered by retiring, of the retirement of other debt exclusions. So by weighting, there's less of a huge impact or a more material impact for that particular project. Stuff that's retiring out. So we talked about that, Karen talked, Karen Conley talked about that sewer upgrade project, the 120,000, and it was in the sewer rates. That tires in '21, that's that little green blip that's gone after that.
And so the debt service that we're projecting for next year is around $400,000 a year. Is that correct?
For the debt exclusion?
I don't know where I got that. Where'd I get that?
It would be in the millions.
Okay. I don't know where I got that then. Okay. Total debt is over $9,000. Okay. In the millions.
Yeah. The senior center alone, the first year would be $725,000 estimated.
Just the, just the service?
Yeah, and I know the middle school, I think, is 3.5, 3.2.
Okay. All right. And at present, our wind turbine income is 100,000 is going towards debt service, correct?
Yes, and the solar array contributes 100,000 towards the debt service as well.
Okay. All right. Does the board have further questions about Nancy's debt update? No? Okay. Then I will see, anybody that is still hanging with us, have any questions? Thank you for still hanging out with us. Okay, I don't see any. This did not require a vote. This was an update, as is the next topic, which is to discuss financial policies. And I will note that Nancy has provided us with 735 pages worth of information to review concerning, I am exaggerating just a little, financial policies. So I asked our director to just outline the need. And I think that we need to obviously put this on a future agenda so that we have time to adequately review the information that's provided. So you want to just give a 50,000 square foot view overview?
Yes. Well, the town has financial policies within its charter, within its general bylaws, and have adopted financial policies in 2012. At our last rating review with Standard and Poor's, they gave us the second highest rating for financial management of good. And we asked them why we're not excellent, you know, what is it, where are we deficient? And they told us our financial policies. So we asked them for an example of what they consider to be the, you know, of excellent financial policy. And they gave us the town of Wakefield as one of their examples. So these are modeled on that town. And as you can see, they are different from ours. I think they're a little bit more direct. And we wanted to bring it before the board for their input. So there's nothing the board needs to do tonight. This is all I'm going to say about them at your leisure. And then get back to us with things you like, things you don't like. And I would expect it'll come back before the board three, four more times before we come across a policy that we like.
Thank you. I'm stunned that they wouldn't find your work exceptional, so. Okay. So if the board does not object, then we will put this on a future agenda to be determined after we look at the agendas. All right. May I ask just one quick question?
You may.
Just from a big picture standpoint, when I went through all this stuff, is this actually achievable in the real world? All of these, you have to set aside this much, you can't set aside more than that. You know, it's very prescriptive in terms of, and what happens if you don't do it?
And that's why I added the compliance component to it because financial policies, in my opinion, are wonderful things if you actually follow them. There's no...
And if you can do them.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I gave you several charts and grids that went with this to show where we are as compared to where that particular town had adopted them because it doesn't meet our needs. We're going to have to change those to ranges that work for Situate.
Right. Yeah. And those charts were great because it showed exactly, it's like, if we did exactly that, we'd all be in, we wouldn't, we wouldn't meet our goals. So, okay. So let's, there's a lot of information there. So I would put that on your summer reading list, folks. And we'll revisit shortly. Concludes our regularly scheduled items, which frees us up at 10 o'clock to go into new business. The first item is to close the warrant for the special town meeting on November 16, 2020. In our backup package, there is, Jim has suggested some potential articles that we may want to include on, on the agenda. Obviously, you'll all recall that we postponed a lot from the annual because we were out in the field and we didn't want to be there for hours and hours. But this is still a pretty robust agenda. So Jim, did you want to walk us through some of this and then we'll go to questions?
Trying to find my new list because I lost it somehow in here. Yes, you want to just walk them through where I find the new list because it's not coming up?
Is it on the, is it the same one that's in our backup?
Should be in your backup, yep.
Okay. I get to that page, I can share that screen, 140. Page 140. For anybody that's...
So it's the, it's the normal ones, unpaid bills, budget reconciliations, the capital plan revisiting for the four items that were knocked off the capital plan. The board can, some things that the board can consider would be transfers into the reserves, so the stabilization funds. So we did take some pretty aggressive removals of funds from our stabilization funds. So do we want to put that money back, like with all the FEMA funds that we received? To rescind, we have a lot of debt, we just had a debt presentation, there's a lot of debt authorized that can be rescinded that we don't need. Look at pay down of outstanding, community preservation projects. There's one that is, is being looked at currently and they are also looking at some recisions as well. Maybe a transfer for a full-day kindergarten program, potentially. Local acceptance of free dog licenses for persons age 70 or over to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. Two potential street acceptances. Then we have the items that were carried over from ATM, which include the Fed Reserve Fund Local Option Acceptance, the sale of the Council on Aging and Minor Fire Station locations, cell tower leases, and then the zoning bylaw. Two, one of the petition articles, the petitioner did not want it to move forward, which was the right to farm by law. And the, I talked to the building commissioner and he did not want the repair and restoration of non-conforming structures to move forward for this town meeting. They'll look at it again for the annual. And then we're still trying to contact the petitioner from South Park Community Action Council to see if they wanted that to move forward or not. They had not responded yet. And I don't know if there were any petition articles that were received by the town clerk today. I did email them.
I'm aware of it.
Back.
Did the board have any questions about the potential articles included on this? And can you see them on my screen, Jim? Yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Motion?
I just, I do have a question. Because you know I do. I just, or a comment that the regional sewer design and engineering is a placeholder at this point. And we're hopeful that we'll have something to talk about at that. And the athletic fields funding is CPC, is the CPC funding. I just wanted to note those two. All right. I would, if you, there's no other comments or questions?
We're going to discuss all these in detail as it gets closer.
Absolutely. We're disclosing the warrant right now. Does anyone have a question that's still hanging out with us? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move that the board of selectmen close the warrant for fall special town meeting to be held on Monday, November 16, 2020.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Conley. No further discussion. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to discussion vote of the appointment of the Republican and Democrat election workers for 2021. In our backup package is the list of those workers. And this is required to fully staff at the election. Any questions or comments about this article, I mean, this motion? or comments about this article, I mean, this motion? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Move to appoint the following election workers from the Republican and Democrat town committees for a period of one year, September 2020 through September 21, as listed in the documentation of tonight's meeting.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Requiring a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you for your service, people. That goes to other business, liaison reports. Does anyone have anything that they need to share with your colleagues or the public?
I have two things.
Yep.
If nobody else does, I don't see anybody else.
Have you go first?
Okay, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank and congratulate some changing of the guard at the waterways. So both Harvey Kurtzberg and Brian Kelly have stepped down as the chair and co-chair for the last, they're not leaving the committee, but they just stepped down chairs. They did a great job the past two years, so I just wanted to say thank you. And they, the committee voted to pass the baton to Mike Gibbons and Rick Murray. So Mike Gibbons will be the new chair, and Rick Murray is the new vice chair of the waterways. So we appreciate all the help that that entire committee does. It's a really important committee. They do a great job, really great job. And then lastly, last week, I took part in a Situate Pride forum called Straight Talk, and it was fabulous. And I really suggest that everybody on the board and other residents take part in their next forum, which will be on November 19 at 6:00 PM. And a lot of the folks that spoke this evening are members of Situate Pride, you know, earlier during the walk-in, but they had a facilitator, a young woman, and they just did such a great job, and really brought to light a lot of realities that exist in town that many of us may not really be aware of. So I just encourage all of us to be enlightened and educated and take part in these. I don't know how they advertise and get the word out about the forums, so I'm going, I'll find that out, and see if we can't share it somewhere so more folks can participate. And that was all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Does anyone else have a liaison report? Now, Tony, Mr. Goodrich?
Just, I want to update. There's the new website for water resources, situateMA.gov/water to get all your information and things there. They did an excellent job. Thank you to the IT team, and Jim, and everyone, so. Looks great.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. No others? I'll just report that in the same vein, after 20 years as serving as a librarian for Situate, the town of Situate, Susan Pope is retiring this Saturday. So if you see, please extend your thanks and congratulations. We're going to miss her. The master plan will have the last public forum before they draft the master plan on October 13. That will be via Zoom, so you can see that on our website when the link is announced. And finally, the Board of Selectmen has been invited to join the Concerned Citizens of Green Bush on a walking tour of Stockbridge Road. As you may recall, they had originally put an application into CPC for a trail. It doesn't meet those requirements, but they would like the opportunity to illustrate to the board directly the need in that area. So the date is September 23, and either 12:00 PM or 5:30 PM. So I will get you sort of the detailed information on that, but I wanted to give you a heads up on, on your calendars if you're available for that. That, I believe, concludes our liaison reports. Do we have correspondence, Madam Clerk?
We did, except it's already been covered. Karen, you covered the correspondence. It's been going back and forth via email with the Green Bush citizens, so I think you gave a good summary of that. And Jim, earlier in his presentation, mentioned that we had received grants from the Department of Energy Resources. These are the Green Community Grants, so that's it.
Great, thank you. I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for the last August 18 meeting. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on August 18, 2020.
Moved by Ms. Conley. Is there a second? Ms. Curran, seconds. Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
And Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0. Thanks. I remind the board that normally we would adjourn to sign documents, but we're all in our jammies at home, so we're going to have to go in tomorrow. All right, I have my socks on. We're going to have to go in tomorrow to sign documents. And there is also a very substantial document that Lorraine and Michelle and Allison pulled together that provides pretty much all of the background data on the wind turbine since inception. And given that we are going to put that on our September 22 agenda, we wanted to have everyone have a lot of time to, you know, we err it on the side of, if you had a question, hopefully it's in one of the tabs, so don't freak out when you see the, you know, 10-inch document. But those are available for pickup tomorrow at the Selectmen's office. And there will be a digital version available. I don't know when that's going to be released, and also a couple of extra copies. If the public wants to see the paper version, they're invited to come in to Town Hall and see it there, because we didn't want to kill too many trees, but they can always, I think Lorraine said it will be put on the town website, and you can download the documents digitally and save some trees. And our next meeting is September 22. That's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, unless somebody has anything else they want to add.
Yes, just one last question. Sorry, I know, the last person wants to ask a question right now. But Lorraine, could, Lorraine clarify when they will be sending out the information on the Equity Committee and accepting applications, and how we're doing it? I made some assumptions earlier. I just want to make sure I was correct.
Sure. I received your change, the document, and I can post it this week to the website and to the Town of Situate Facebook page as well. Hi, Ruth, I'll send it to Ruth to put something up with the Situate Mariner as well.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and we can send something to W A T D, too, if you'd like.
That'd be great. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, people? I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
So moved, Ms. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Conley, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote is required.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you all for attending. Thank you, Ruth, for hanging out with us. And we will see you in two weeks.